All right. All right, we'll call and speak to our commissioners. If you will, please make sure to hit your button when you're speaking. Take mark and fold. We will now do roll call. Raise your right hand. Do the invocation, be ready to pray, please.
Say. We thank you for the residents who are here tonight. We thank you for all of the women's that have been through the participation. Thank you for the rain on the gardens and the crops. We thank you for everything that you've done to all of you. It's because of you that things happen. All these things are created in your name, and I come to submit to you this prayer. Amen.
Now, please welcome Ms. Harding from North Pitt High School for our pledge.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ariana Harding, and I'm currently a junior at North Pitt High School. During tonight's meeting, I would lead you to pledge as y'all are, and please do remember to pledge your own.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you for having me.
Have approval of the approval of the agenda. Motion, a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries. Those that resist, to the board. Has anybody signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have several signed up to speak this evening. First one is Bobby Norville. Attorney, bring the statement.
Pitt County, welcome to all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening, my name is Bobby Norville. I live in Fulton. I'm coming to you tonight with a concern over your proposed gun ordinance. I want to go back to when this complaint originally come out. It started about a noise complaint from residents in the Holly Pine subdivision. During discussion on how this issue, several solutions were discussed outside of having a gun ordinance. One was having the HOA take care of their problem in their neighborhood. The other would be to have the actual homeowner of the residents where the problem was, since he was having renters there, and they were causing a problem, have him take care of the issue. After some more discussion, you asked for to, for someone to come from the Sheriff's Office to help discuss ways to help these issues. And they pretty much told you that the noise ordinance that you have now in place was not written so that they could take care of the problem. So another way to take care of this is amend the current noise ordinance you have in place. At a later meeting, a prior ordinance that had been brought back several years ago was brought back before the board and discussed, and a public hearing was held. During this hearing, there were three people who spoke in favor of the gun ordinance, and you had twenty-two people who spoke against it. The county manager also reported that they received one hundred eighty-three calls into the office against this ordinance, and one commissioner had a petition with almost two hundred signatures against the same ordinance. Also during the public hearing, the original complaint from the Holly Pine subdivision got up and spoke that their complaint was not about the guns, it was about the noise that the guns made. So even he even stated that it wasn't about the guns, that he didn't think this would be necessary. At this time, you know, after all the opposition, this issue should have been taken care of. After all this discussion about noise ordinance, at some point in time, it got turned into a safety issue. There were concerns about some children in the neighborhood that were scared. I mean, the children were actually never in danger. They weren't shot at, as far as I know. Nobody has made any complaints about anyone being hurt, anything like that. They were scared of the noise. Some commissioners, over the course of the public hearing and other discussions about the gun ordinance, have commented on how they appreciate everyone coming out and giving their input. And even after all the overwhelming opposition, there's some of you who still insist on having a gun ordinance to fix a noise problem. These actions and comments that you, excuse me. Even one commissioner even commented that they didn't care how many people showed up in opposition. They could feel the whole room, they didn't care, they were going to pass it anyway. Comments like this doesn't instill a lot of trust in your decision making. Also during these discussions, there's been several comments made about it. It's not about gun rights of people, you know, and everything. Anytime you want to put a restriction on someone and their Second Amendment, it's going to be a restriction on their gun rights. As a right man, you have a gun ordinance in place, ordinance in the fore, that restricts people from taking themselves and their family while inside a county building. That's what a gun ordinance does, it restricts people. My Second Amendment rights is I have the right to have and bear arms. Bear means I should be able to carry them. I ask Mr. Rose, I hate to have to stop you, but your time is up.
Yep.
And we do have a full house of little lads.
Yes, Gregory C. Gregory C. Wade Wilson. Wade Wilson.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Wade Wilson. I live in Greenville, North Carolina. I'm also here with some other folks from Down Home, North Carolina, in our Pitt County chapter. I'll keep this brief, because there's actually going to be some others from the group speaking after me on this issue. So this is a campaign that we're taking on in the Pitt County chapter of Down Home to expand farmers' market hours and fund the Double Bucks program to help make the farmers' market, the Leroy James Farmers Market, more accessible and affordable to all residents of Pitt County. So currently, there's budget negotiations going on up in Washington, DC. We don't know how that will play out, but what we can do here in Pitt County is support those who rely on SNAP, the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, by giving three hundred thirty thousand dollars in available grant money to fund our farmers' market. Three hundred thousand of these dollars could be used in our Double Bucks program, which helps to double the purchasing power of people using SNAP to purchase produce and other goods at the farmers' market, as well as thirty thousand dollars to be used in advertising for our local farmers to market the Double Bucks program to help ensure greater accessibility for folks who could use this program. We're also asking for the farmers' market to be open three days a week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, to add to this increased accessibility. So again, we know there's money available in the form of several grants. We're excited to work with the county commissioners to apply for these grants and bring in the requisite funds for this. And I'm going to turn the floor over to some other people from our chapter who have experienced the farmers' market and have experiences on SNAP to talk about why they support this campaign that we're running. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Is it Danny or Dane Kavanaugh?
My name is Daniel Kavanaugh. I'm from Down Home, NC, and I want to talk to you about the Double Bucks program. I'm here today because I believe that no one in our county should have to go hungry or worry about how they will get food for themselves or for their family. I hope you feel the same way, and that you will take what I and others have to say to you today seriously. Growing up in rural Edgewood County, I saw a lot of poor families who struggled to make ends meet. I was fortunate enough to have a family who could always put food on the table and pay for our necessities without worrying about how to afford it. Others were not so lucky. One of the best friends I ever had growing up was a kid named Kerwin. Kerwin never had an easy life, but he was intelligent, he was musically gifted, and he worked hard to get good grades through high school, while also taking college courses and working part-time to help support himself and his family. There were multiple times throughout his life where his family relied on SNAP EBT in order to have decent food to eat, just like over one and a half million residents of North Carolina and over thirty-seven thousand residents of Pitt County due today, according to the Federal Reserve Bank. Without these benefits, Kerwin and his three younger siblings would not have been able to get things like eggs, poultry, and other grocery items that are considered commonplace in most households in this county without going without other necessities. And at times, even this was not quite enough. With the rising price of groceries, the spending power of recipients of this program is already shrinking, and it will continue to shrink dramatically as the proposed cuts to this program go through. We are not asking today to solve this problem, but we are asking you to take just a small bit of action with the funding available you have to ease it, if ever so slightly, in our community. The Double Bucks program would be a way of increasing the spending power of SNAP at our local farmers' market, which would not only help those residents who rely on the program, but our local Pitt County farmers who rely on selling the food they produce in order to make a living. By matching every SNAP dollar with an additional dollar, this program would double the amount SNAP recipients could spend on food at the farmers' market. One dollar would become two, twenty would become forty, and so on. I think this would benefit our community greatly. In light of the situation many residents of our county are facing, I hope you will do the right thing by our county and by your constituents and fund this program. And thank you for your time.
The next one, the last name is, looks like G-U-I-L-L, Will. First name starts with a D. Perfect.
Good evening. My name is Darcy Guel, and I am a member of Down Home, the Pitt County chapter of Down Home, North Carolina, and a resident of Pitt County. And I'm here to promote the Double Bucks program at the farmers' market. In the summer of 2018, I received SNAP benefits for three months. During those three months, I ate better than before and after I was on SNAP. It enabled me to buy healthier foods and consume a more nutritious diet. In 2022, I was in a serious car accident, and I received SNAP benefits for a year after spending two months in the hospital. This was after the pandemic, and food prices were considerably higher than they were four years before. I struggled to make my benefits last for the entire month, and healthier foods were not affordable. My experience on SNAP in 2022 is one of the reasons I believe the Double Bucks program would benefit recipients of SNAP. It would provide SNAP recipients additional funds to buy healthier foods available at the farmers' market. We know major cuts are coming from Congress and those who use SNAP. We have an opportunity as a county to ensure our people are better protected and can ride out the wave of cuts while supporting our local farmers. Supporting this program would ensure that our most vulnerable, our most vulnerable residents are protected.
Carlos Alfonso.
Hi, y'all. I'm Carlos. I'm actually the organizer for the Pitt County chapter for Down Home, North Carolina. When we initially considered this campaign, it was under the guise of providing more to the people who needed it. But as we heard more and more from DC, it became very apparent that we're talking about maintaining, not even just giving people more benefits. The issue in the past years with the Double Bucks program is it's never been properly funded. It's been local churches donating here and there, and, you know, we're talking about five, six thousand dollars for everyone in the county. That doesn't go very far, we can be honest with ourselves. We have, like Darcy said, we have this tremendous opportunity as a county to protect our people from something that's happening federally. And again, we're not talking about tax hikes or anything like that. We're talking about grants that we know that are available, that the county can apply for, and that I've actually emailed the county manager about to start discussions over, like the Thrive Communities Grant. We know that we need to have further conversations about this program to make sure that we implement it well, but that we also need to have further conversations on how to best utilize our farmers' market. Currently, the hours that we have just aren't super accessible to folks. Eight to twelve on a Saturday isn't great, if you're, you know, just a regular working-class person, right? So I invite all the county commissioners here to reach out and speak to us personally. In fact, my phone number is five six one, five zero three, zero six two two. And I'd love to start that conversation with you all immediately. Now, I know we're not broadcasting this live, but hopefully for the folks who see this on YouTube, we also do know we want to chat with farmers. This program won't work if we don't have them on our side, and if the farmers' market doesn't actually work for them as well. So any farmers that are listening, please reach out to me at that same number, and know that on April nineteenth, at the Greenville Unitarian Universalist Church, we will be hosting a farmer's social to just hear back from folks, get them in the loop, and make sure that we implement the proper program that makes sense for them as well. And for our county commissioners, I invite y'all to our chapter meeting on the twenty-sixth, same time, same place, at the UU in Greenville. So you can hear more from us, and we can start that conversation today. Thank you.
That's all that I have signed up to speak, Mr. Chairman. Just as a note on your public address to the board sign-up sheet, Marcus Carrion signed up in opposition to the gun ordinance and asked that a statement be read. It's rather lengthy. The statement was emailed to each one of you by him on April seventh, 2025.
All right, moving along to presentations, if we can have a motion to approve proclamation, please. Motion, a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries.
We have four matters to go out from. If we would start, Deion Dopery, would come forward.
Okay, welcome, members of the board and those with us this evening. It is always my pleasure, once a month, to recognize the county employee of the month, and this month is Deion Dopery. Program that we've had in place now going on our fourth year, where employees nominate other employees when they notice them doing something above and beyond, just going a little bit extra mile, doing that little extra something that inspires other employees and models the behavior that we want to see countywide. And so it's my greatest pleasure this evening to present Deion Dopery with a certificate of recognition, which reads Employee of the Month, April 2025. Present to Deion Dopery, Public Health, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County Government and the citizens that we serve. Just a little bit about Deion. She has been the outreach division director for the Public Health Department. And she's been with us for twenty-five years. Her goal is to support mothers' health and children's development from pregnancy to age five. Her nominator said, "Deion is a true pillar of the Health Department, always going above and beyond her team and the entire Public Health Division." She said, "Whether it's answering questions, providing support, or comforting those in need, Deion is the first person everyone turns to." And even with that, today, during the COVID-19 pandemic, Deion and her team worked tirelessly to meet every need, from packing vans and conducting swaps to offering emotional support to those in need. Her favorite saying is, "I have the title of supervisor, but I work for you." And that reflects her selflessness and dedication to serving others. So with that, Deion, I am pleased that Chairman, to present to you your certificate, and you will have directed positive one hundred dollars as a celebration of you.
Thank you so much, Deion. Okay, your next is a proclamation. If our friends from Pitt Community College would please come forward. We have President Maria Carr, vice president Maria Cox, with us this evening to accept a proclamation because of April, it's Community College Month. And so if we allow, I'll read this proclamation, recognizing Pitt Community College Month, April 2025. It reads, "Whereas, in recognition of the important contribution of community and technical colleges to the nation's educational system, in 1985, the United States Congress authorized to request a then-president novel grant to issue proclamation five four one eight, establishing National Community College Month. And whereas Pitt Community College has demonstrated exceptional commitment to educating and empowering more than eighteen thousand curriculum and community education students for success annually, and has been a valuable source of higher education in Pitt County and Eastern North Carolina since March of nineteen sixty-one. And whereas Pitt Community College has formed a business and workforce solutions division aimed at streetlining processes, fostering strong connections between employers, students, and faculty. Pitt Community College has entered one hundred and thirty-six, thus making its transition to a business and industry, vetted eight hundred and twenty-three workers during the twenty-three twenty-four academic year. And with the support of Pitt County, Pitt Community College is constructing a thirty thousand square foot welding technology building on campus at a cost of seventeen point seven million dollars to teach welding skills in the healthy industry in our area. And whereas Pitt Community College has partnered with Johnson Development Networks and Edmond Weld attended, each year since 2021, to hold a better skilled set of jobs fair. In February, 2024, when a record fifteen hundred job seekers and high school students discussed jobs and workforce reparation options, when a record one hundred and thirty-two employers, educational institutions, and community resources. And whereas Pitt Community College offers transfer options that help students save money on a four-year degree, and opportunities for high school students to save money on higher education and get ahead in college while they're still in high school to progress, such as the North Carolina Career College Program, the Pitt Community College, Pitt County Schools Technical Academy, and Pitt County Schools Early College High School, which is located on Pennsylvania Avenue. And whereas Pitt Community College Athletics Department has demonstrated excellence on the playing fields and in the classrooms, I have replaced twenty Bulldog student athletes on the NJCA gates, twenty-three twenty-four all academic teams, including eight on the first team, for having four point five HPA. And whereas Pitt Community College responded to the needs of fellow army in western North Carolina, following her medical need by donating deliverance supplies to assist medical care centers and raised funds for Isothermal Community College of Cynthia. Pitt Community College and Roll Time are making valuable contributions to their communities each day as firefighters, class of colleges, police officers, HDA 边境 healthcare workers, computer support personnel, child education and development specialists, and care leaders. So now therefore, it is resolved that Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 2025 as Pitt Community College Month in Pitt County. Adopted the second day of April 2025, signed by Nancy Collin, Chairman, and tested by Kimberly Heinz, clerk to the board, Mr. Chairman, if you could present this to the President. Next, we have a proclamation that celebrates the fiftieth anniversary of the Pitt County Council on Aging. Rick Sette, would come join up. You know, Rick Sette is the executive director of Pitt County Council on Aging and also, in his spare time service as the mayor of Simpson. This evening, we have a proclamation celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the Pitt County Council on Aging, and it reads, "Whereas, Pitt County Council on Aging has been dedicated to the mission of equality of life for older adults since its establishment in nineteen seventy-five. And whereas, the mission of the Pitt County Council on Aging is to help the county standard so the more active and healthy life remain independent as long as possible. And whereas, for fifty years, Pitt County Council on Aging has provided vital services, resources, and activities to support the independence, dignity, and well-being of the senior population in our community. And whereas, through programs such as Sixty-Year Wellness Centers, Wheels on Wheels, Medicare Counseling, Programming and Activities, Healthy Aging and Injury Prevention, and Aging Services, Pitt County Council on Aging has played a critical role in meeting the diverse needs of older adults across the town. And whereas, the dedication of the council's staff, volunteers, community partners, and supporters have made a lasting and meaningful impact on the lives of elderly individuals and families. And whereas, the work of the Council on Aging, it provides the value of integrity, compassion, respect, and community service, and continues to address the growing needs of an aging population. So now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize and congratulate the Pitt County Council on Aging on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary, and encourage all residents to honor their commitment to serving older adults and promoting a thriving, inclusive community for people of all ages. Adopted the seventh day of April 2025, signed by Betty Collin, Chairman, and tested by Kimberly Heinz, clerk to the board, Mr. Chairman. If you could present that. Thank you so much. And lastly, this is for us, all of you. And this is a proclamation to short on it, I'll read, for proclaiming National County Government Month, which is April 2025, our theme is Why Counties Matter. Mr. Chairman, this reads, "Whereas, the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties, boroughs, serving more than three hundred thirty million of their provide essential services to great, healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas, counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas, counties have intercontinental partners implementing local, state, and federal programs to address the needs of all residents. And whereas, Pitt County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in an efficient, cost-effective way. And whereas, each year since nineteen ninety-one, the national association of counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And so now therefore, it is resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month, and urge all county residents, officials, schools, and the fleet to learn more about county government. This was signed by our Chairman on this day, tested by our Clerk. Get a picture for the tee. To learn more about the events for National County Government Month in my latest report.
Now move into the public hearings portion. Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Manager, and members of the board. Tonight, we have three public hearings for rezoning requests. The first one being CHW Farm LLC. This request is to rezone twenty-one point five, zero five acres of the property located on parcel number nine one two eight two, which is located on the northern side of US thirteen, east of its intersection with the NC eleven bypass, also known as the Southwest Bypass, from rural residential to general commercial. You'll see on the map, on the screen, the site, as I described, is located between the Southwest Bypass and Frog Level Road, just to the north of US thirteen. This is the existing land use map showing the existing land uses in the area. You'll notice up to the north and east, the red area there is Oxford Park, with a lot of commercial activity. Also, there is some commercial activity located just to the west. Also, there is some commercial activity located just to the west, being Little's Nursery along US thirteen. And then further on the other side, heading west of the bypass, you'd have a convenience store located there at Bell on the Route. Also, wanted to point out the city of Greenville does have jurisdiction in close proximity of this site. The Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, which is one of our newer land use plans, indicates that this area is projected for mixed use. It also has some industrial area to the north of this site. That mixed use designation includes offices, commercial, and residential uses. Buildings are generally located closer to the street, and parking should be located in the rear of those buildings. Residential densities generally range from five to eight dwelling units per acre. The Pitt County zoning ordinance, as well as the city of Greenville's zoning map, is shown on this slide here. And you'll notice there's a lot of heavy commercial activity in this general area, both in the county that I showed earlier, as well as in the city, along West Art Drive, in the city's jurisdiction. So the proposed zoning request is for general commercial. This is intended to accommodate a range of retail service, office, and limited wholesale with moderate density multifamily uses in areas that have access to thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. Pitt County finds, Pitt County staff finds that this request is consistent with the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as a mixed use, which allows for the mix of residential and commercial land uses. The area is proposed for the rezoning has frontage alone and direct access to US thirteen and is in close proximity to several other non-residential land uses and commercially zone properties, both in the county and the city. Planning staff also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest because there are already several non-residential land uses located along this corridor. Additionally, non-future residential development will require site plan approval by planning staff. The planning board reviewed this request at its March nineteenth meeting and voted unanimously nine to zero to recommend approval to this board to approve the request and advises that it is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable. So I've got your motions in your packet, and at this time, Mr. Chairman, we'll hold the public hearing.
All right, I will declare the public hearing open. Anybody sign up to speak?
You have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Kent Malpas.
Mr. Chair, if I may read the statement.
Please.
With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the CHW Farm zoning ordinance map amendment. Please state your name and address, and the name of any organization that you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ken Malpas. I'm representing CHW Farms, which is Charles Wainwright. This is a commercial corridor basically from the Southwest Bypass all the way up to Greengill Boulevard. And be glad to answer any questions, but I think it's, you know, it meets all the requirements of your land use plan and anything that might be out in the area.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
No one else has signed up to speak.
All right, I will declare the public hearing closed. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Don't forget to, uh, penalty box.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Put me in the penalty box.
I know they gonna get you about that if you don't get to what I'm supposed to.
I'll make two, two motions if it's appropriate.
Please, sir.
First, I move that, that we adopt the consistency statement and the factual basis found by staff for that finding. And then the second motion that we approve the request by CHW Farms.
Got a, got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carriers?
All right, Mr. Hill, we'll right back to you. All right, the next item on your agenda is the rezoning request by Glenda Riley to rezone forty point six nine acres of property located on both sides of Pactolus, Old Pactolus Road from rural agricultural to rural agricultural conditional district to operate a sand mine. A similar request was previously heard by this board on December the eighteenth in 2023, and that request was denied. At the time, the planning board did vote five to three to recommend approval of that request. The map shows the general site location. It's located between the city of Greenville and Pactolus, just south of US two sixty-four, as I mentioned, along Old Pactolus Road. The existing land use in this area is shown on the map here. There is several areas of residential dwellings, as well as three industrial areas, which are existing sand mines. And also, I should point out that Bradford Creek Golf Club is located just to the west of this site as well. There's also, if I could point out, a RV park located in this area that's indicated in commercial that is Whispering Oaks RV Park there. The future land use map indicates that this is open space conservation. There is some commercial activity expected along the US two sixty-four corridor, as well as a commercial crossroads area shown in pink here at the intersection just to the east of Ram's Horn Road. The open space conservation area designation applies to lands that is inappropriate for many development types due to the physical or environmental barriers, including high flood risk. And that's the case in this situation. This area is located within the one hundred year flood plain. The primary uses for open space conservation area include timber and agricultural activities and recreation with limited development not in conflict with residential uses or significant environmental resources. The land use policy in Section Four encourages quality development and reduce impacts on existing uses, and it advises to consider performance-based zoning criteria for certain types of industrial activities, such as this case being a sand mine. It specifies that locational requirements, such as separation from schools or dwellings, are specific site standards, such as buffers or optional setbacks, may be necessary. The existing zoning in the area, again, you have a commercial activity along two sixty-four. The rest is the rural agricultural shown in dark green with some rural residential indicated in lighter shaded green. The proposed zoning for this site is rural agricultural conditional district. The primary intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, as well as associated public and institutional uses, low density, or low intensity, I'm sorry, commercial uses and agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed throughout the area and reflects the diverse nature of the land uses in the predominantly rural area. The conditional zoning district allows for the approval of a proposal for a specific use, which is with reasonable conditions to assure compatibility of the proposed use and the enjoyment of the neighboring property owners. And in this case, as I mentioned before, the proposed use is a sand mine. The Pitt County zoning ordinance does have a section with standards regarding mining and quarrying, sand pits, and mineral extraction. It requires a minimum of a hundred feet of use separation from the edge of any pit to the permitted boundary line. It also indicates hours of operation should be taken into account when there is blasting involved. However, with the mining of sand, there is no blasting involved with sand mining. Screening, providing a buffer between the permitted use and surrounding property owners. And it also requires that a valid state-issued mining permit be obtained. So we do have a plan that was submitted as part of this conditional district rezoning. I've kind of zoomed in here, and it's not showing like here. Well, I'm not used to being in my home base here with the technology. This was supposed to be a slide presentation that these popped up on. So I'll try my best to go throughout the presentation here and detail what this show, one at a time, not so much at one time. You'll see the blue line. The blue line here indicates the excavated areas on all three segments of this rezoning request. The petitioner has proposed a two hundred foot setback along, this is Old Pactolus Road. This is a section located to the north of Old Pactolus Road. They have proposed a two hundred foot setback from Old Pactolus Road and a hundred foot of the perimeter of the adjoining properties. Our ordinance only requires a one hundred foot setback, so they have gone above the line and established that two hundred foot setback along Old Pactolus Road. Same thing as you go south, across Old Pactolus Road, again, a two hundred foot setback with a hundred foot setback proposed along the common agricultural borders. Down to the south of that property, another two hundred foot setback from the RV park that I mentioned, the Whispering Oaks RV Park. So there's a two hundred foot setback proposed there with that one hundred foot setback. There are some live oak trees along Old Pactolus Road on both sides that are already existing. And on top of that, the berm's are shown in green. You'll see our zoning ordinance requires a six-foot berm, which is what they have proposed at the last time this request was heard. They have come back with ten-foot berm's located on that northern excavation area. And then on the south side, they have proposed fifteen-foot berm's for screening on that. And then down here on the southern portion that joins the Whispering Oaks, they are proposing a twenty-foot screening berm. So they have attempted to mitigate some of the screening and impacts to adjoining property owners by establishing those buffers areas. Also, want to point out, there is a repairing buffer located on this track. That is a stream that requires a buffer, so they have shown that it will not impact the stream. So Pitt County finds, Pitt County staff finds that this request is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 comprehensive land use plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as open space conservation on the future land use plan or land use map, and the uses in the area are predominantly agricultural with limited residential uses. The land use policy LU four in the plan recommends site-specific and/or operational standards for uses such as sand mines, and additional separation requirements are buffering from existing development. Additionally, the site is located within very close proximity to two existing sand mines. Planning staff also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest because there is limited residential development directly adjacent to the proposed mine. And additionally, the applicant will provide screening and buffering that exceeds the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance in an effort to minimize the impacts on surrounding areas. The planning board reviewed this rezoning request at its March nineteenth, 2025 meeting, and voted five to four to recommend approval and advised that this is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 comprehensive land use plan and is reasonable. Your motions are included in your agenda packets. Wanted to cover a couple of conditions that is associated with this due to it being a conditional use rezoning. No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until the site plan is prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance and submitted to the Pitt County Planning Department for review and approval. The applicant must obtain a flood development permit from the county prior to development, and the operation permit is required by the North Carolina Department of Environment and not, and Environmental Quality, it, excuse me, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Qualities, Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources Division prior to any work occurring on site. Also, that fifty-foot repairing buffer is required to be shown and not impacted unless deemed exempt. The sand mine also shall operate only between the hours of seven AM to seven PM, as I mentioned before, because there's no blasting involved. The hours of operation is not required by our ordinance, but the applicant has agreed to only operate between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. They must provide a fifteen-foot electrical easement to the adjacent right away for the length of the property, and no large trees or berm shall be placed within that easement. And also, they must obtain a commercial driveway permit from NC DOT for access. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
All right, I will declare the public hearing open.
First one signed up to speak is Scott Pollard. Next person is Wayne Mayhew.
Mr. Chair, while he's coming on, read the statement. With this public hearing now open on Glenda Riley, Conditional District rezoning, Pitt County welcomes all comments. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Wayne Mayhew. I live at two seven seven three Sunnyside Road. My wife and I own Whispering Oaks RV Resort. Very proud of it. I want to, for the record, at the most recent planning meeting, I misspoke and said that Mr. Riley had fines related to his operation. I stand corrected. I misunderstood a meeting I had with the state. I want to express my apologies to Mr. Riley for that. It was a misunderstanding. Apparently, he has not been fined. So just over a year ago, you kind folks voted no, eight to zero across the board against the sand mine, and you voted no for all the right reasons. There have been no significant changes in Mr. Riley's application. The setback, that doesn't mean anything. At the end of the day, this is a massive, massive commercial operation. They'll run seven days a week, hard. Mr. Riley told me personally that even though he said to the planning board, seven to seven, he'll run to nine thirty at night. And that's a quote directly from Mr. Riley. We own the resort. It's very successful. I take, I shouldn't say take exception, but I want to make note that the planning board, the planning department overlooks the fact that between my park and the park next door, we have hundreds of people that live there. They come from all over the state. They live there. They enjoy the peace and the quiet. So we have a small village of people there. This isn't just about two houses. This is about hundreds of people that pay to be at an RV resort. Frankly, the community will suffer. Property values will decline. We'll be forced to endure nonstop sand noise, forced to deal with ongoing dust and contamination. The roads will be toast, and at the end of the day, we'll be left with a forty-acre hole in the ground. A massive nightmare. The negative impacts on our local community will be enormous, and I want to address road safety for a moment. I was sitting in my backyard, looking at Old Pactolus Road, and I see all these buses going by, school buses, and it, and I realized. And it, and I realized, and I brought it to everybody's attention, what about these kids and these buses? Those roads back there are narrow and small. I can barely get, you know, when you go by one of those 20 ton trucks, you have to be full on. You have to really concentrate. If a school bus is pushed off the road, if one of these massive trucks loses their brakes and ruins the truck, you don't want to wake up the next day and hear the news. If you Google trucks and, or buses and sand mine trucks, it's unfortunate. You'll see it throughout the country, lots of incidences of accidents. It's sad. The bridge that goes into Old Pactos Road is very tiny and narrow. These trucks weigh 20 tons. There'll be tens of thousands of trucks over a span of what Mr. Riley says is two years. I find that hard to believe. I don't know how you can mine 30 football fields of sand in two years. I just, I'm not a mining guy, but that's a lot of dirt. In closing, the sand mine will hurt our business. It will change our business model. We cater to folks at ECU University a lot. We cater to the hospital. We cater to tourists. And we cater to just folks that want to come and have a little break and fish our pond and walk our 30 acres. It's a beautiful, beautiful piece of property. We're very proud of it. I have nothing against the Riley's mining operation. I just think this is the bad spot for it.
Thank you, sir. Your time.
Mark Edwards.
Mark Edward, 3620 K L A. I'm a consultant for the Riley's on helping obtain the state mining permit and which I've do for several others over the last 25 plus years in several surrounding counties. Just a few points to note out. I understand there's been some concern about some wells nearby. This site would not be de-watering, which is pumping water and lowering the water table. So the lowering the water table is not going to be concerned because that's not the type of mine this is going to be. So there would be zero impact on neighboring wells. There's a precedent with an existing mine. I think it's Allen Grading directly next door. The map's not still up, but it was the one directly to the west. And it runs all the way beside this site and down behind next to the RV park. And they are excavating within, as scaled on the GIS, 65 feet or less closer to the RV property. We are going to be more than 200 feet away with the 20 foot high berm. Just for reference, the traffic light's about 15 feet high. So that's much higher than the ceiling from this room. So that's going to screen you from sound, visibility for sure. Noise will be reduced. Mr. Hill's already mentioned the buffers. We've increased from 100 to 200 feet on the roadway and on the rear. He also mentioned the berms, typical six feet. We're going to 15 and 20 on the rear. There's not going to be any blasting or rock. I believe the neighboring mine, my understanding is actually crush rock, which is a pretty noisy process, noisier than what this one's going to be. And by the way, that one is a much larger site, probably about three times as large. The 40 acres is a little bit misleading here. That's the whole track of land. This site actually has more buffer acres than excavation acres. The pond, the lake that will be left will be roughly 18 acres, not 40. And it has to be reclaimed as required by the state. There'll be a bond on site, a bond required by the state that will be held and not released until reclamation has taken place and approved by the state. This is shortly a project. This is not a 20 or 30 year long project. It's two, three, maybe four years, and then it's over and you're left with a lake. Now I mentioned the state mining and the NCDUQ will do routine inspections to ensure everything's in compliance. If not, they will can find after a warning. So that keeps everything in compliance. Permitting is essential for this, the Riley's to stay in business. Any impacts, not only the Riley himself, but their families and their employees. Economic development is important through the county, I think all everybody would agree. Sand pits are a important part. Every type of construction, whether it's building roadways, shopping centers, all these types of constructions require sand. Sand in concrete, sand in asphalt, sand in building of roadways, sand in mortar. Without sand pits, these concrete companies, asphalt companies are going to have to go somewhere else to get it, Monor County, surrounding counties. So without sand pits, costs are going to go up because distance is a key factor. Thank you, sir.
John Lee Powers.
You may wonder why I'm here. I'm just more or less a fact finder for Mr. Riley, an old friend of Mr. Riley. I've known him for 30 something years. Have utilized his material of his mines. Have always respected the professionalism he has shown in the way he operates his mines. If we could pay attention just for a second. This ceiling is run by heavy hoes. It's 10 foot tall. That's a berm. 10 foot tall, 10 foot wide. There is no noise out there. There's a very minor operation. And Mr. Riley wants to get in and get out before. This material, the majority of this, let me back up two steps. Why am I so involved? I designed, thought of, built and operated Whispering Oaks RV Park for 22 years. I had two full blown mining operations going on beside me for 22 years with no berms. So that there was no problem at all there. With all due respect, this is about a little, little exaggerating here. Little, little exaggeration in your own terms. School buses and trucks and all, I get it. I get it in theory. But there have been two major mining operations going on to my east and to my west for 22 years without any incident. No fender benders, no gut, no children injured. So that's a little, that's a little farfetched. This material, here, I'm just trying to state the facts. This material is coming out of Mr. Riley's farm, mining operations. It's already spoken for. This is spoken for by Mr. Beast, definitely ring the bell. You know, the gentleman that just donated $10 million to Pitt County, County of Pitt. DSM, one of our largest employers, they've spoken for the material. Who else? I have a list here. Quite a few folks have already, again, have already spoken for the material on here. The neighbors, the campers, if you will, the temporary occupants of these sites, they're, they're here temporarily, again, hang fire. I have run a 22 horsepower, zero turn, John Deere mower right next to a camper every day to all four, only 14, by the way, 14 campers there with someone sleeping inside. I'm just a little exaggerating, folks, just not good to handle that. Bear with me. This is only, Mr. Riley is only sending material out. He's not bringing any material in. So there's no slamming of the trucks and such as that unnecessary noise. When he says seven to seven, he's operating seven to seven. I know that. Everybody, anybody knows Mr. Riley, which I have for 30 some years. Knows that word. And I know y'all are between a rock and a hard place. It's impossible to keep everybody happy. But if we have a mining operation, it's not going to happen to City River Supreme. It's not going to happen anywhere. This is a perfect place, perfect place where a mining operation can take place where it is now. Again, two other mining operations are already operating there. We're City Green, City Green with dump trucks coming into the mine.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up, I'm afraid. Yes, sir. That little bell up there needs your thing.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Riley.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Riley. The property in question, for the mining permit, along the, our running mining operation, we, we want to mine the property, which she does, because it becomes her.
Mr. Riley, can I, if you'll talk to the microphone?
Okay.
We got some commissioners that can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The property belongs to my mother. She, she's the one that wants to do this and I'm, I'm going to mine it for her. The money that's coming from this is for added income from her, her brother and her sister. We have given a lot of berm setbacks height to address the situation for Mr. Mayhew and Mr. Pollard. Matter of fact, Mr. Mayhew called me the 26th of, of last month and basically told me he was siding on our side. And I mean, I had to text messages and everything. But, you know, recently, I pretty much knew you could probably back up on that. But we, we have done the setbacks for Mr. Pollard to get away from his house. So we will be digging next to his residence. We saw excavation and the berms will be way behind his house. It's the first point away from where his well would be. As far as Mr. Mayhew's RV park, there's an adjacent RV park right beside him, which is Manning RV Park. And for the past, I don't know, two, three years, they've been hauling concrete, wood debris and everything in the RV park beside him. And they're using it to fill in the existing sand mine that was there before to put the RV park lots on top of. And if you got bulldozers and excavators running next right beside him in the existing truck or RV park, why is it such a big issue? You know, when I'm 200 foot set apart from him and I'm, I'm way away from him, furthermore, I'm worried his neighbors doing the work with the, with the excavators and the bulldozers. You know, we want to get along with everybody in the neighborhood and we, we did what we did to try to help their situation if there is a problem. But it's like Mark Edwards says, you know, we're regulated by the state and the county. And as far as north ordinance and, and dust or whatever it may be, we take it in stride. And we also take measures to keep that, to have a member where we are because we're, 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 we're regulated by the state and the county to do that. I have people that live right beside who are currently mining a whole lot closer than where Mr. Mayhew is or, or Mr. Pollard and never had a complaint with him. The only, only complaint they have once in a while is dust. We, we worry about it and stuff like that. That is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steve Watford.
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Watford. I live 3065 Sunnyside Road. I don't have as much to lose as Mr. Pollard or the man that owns the RV park. The only thing I'd like to take into consideration, and someone said something about the, the well water. The man's water, if you cause a problem to the man's water, they need to be able to fix it. Mining, I don't know how much noise it's going to make, but I know how easily I'm woke up. I don't know about y'all. But if he says he's going to stick to a certain time, he needs to be made to stick to that time. If he doesn't, then something needs to be addressed with it. Like I said, I have nothing to gain, nothing to lose. What I can tell you is I have a pond on my property that on 20, 2015, the water was clear. I have a picture of someone who is deceased that caught a life-size bass out of my pond. Now, whether it's the mining on the other side of 264 or the other one that someone else spoke of that's found by Bradford Creek, now my pond is stagnant green. Whether it's got anything to do with it or not, I don't know. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. But if the man's water is affected, he needs to be taken care of. They need to address that issue. Other than that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I know you've got a hard decision. Don't know how to tell you to go about it.
Stephen Jones.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am speaking in favor of the proposed sand mine. It is a vital economic resource for the local area. We do a lot of work in the area. I've worked with Joseph for many years. We use his product in many different things, but the proximity to where the sand mine proposal is, is in good location for the industrial area of Greenville. There's going to be a lot of activity coming in the next couple of years. Their product will be more ideal for a lot of what we're trying to do, developing the industrial side of Greenville. Couple of the places where in the South Parkway area and also around Industrial Boulevard that are coming in the next few years will need their product to help get their buildings and stuff off the ground. With the farm being tied up for 70 years within the family, with the Riley family, I don't see how two people can contest and hold up what has already been planned and zoned and the contingencies that Mr. Riley has already brought to double the buffer yards, to increase his berm height and to make it where we can have the sand build a better economic area for Greenville, North Carolina. Thank you for your time.
Last but not least, Scott Pollard.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Pollard. My property is right beside the man, sand mine that Mr. Riley wants to put up. I've been there since 2007. Got a three bedroom home with my wife, Tracy, and myself. We enjoy the vision, quiet, living there with the wildlife. We see deer and bald eagles all around our property. One of the biggest problems I have is the noise of this rezoning. I have post-traumatic stress in which I have a doctor's letter with me tonight to prove it. The excavating will, will be tremendous all during the day with the banging of the equipment. I can hear his operation out on 264. So if my house even having a buffer is going to be louder than not what I hear him on 264. They talk about do what Mr. Manning's going to do is his word. In December of '23, I presented this photograph yesterday. This is Mr. Manning, I mean, Mr. Riley out on Sunday afternoon mining at the 264 highway. I took this photograph, which is part 11/26/2023. Is he going to do what y'all telling him to do? No, sir. No, ma'am. He's going to do exactly what he wants to because he knows that's his property. And he's going to do what he wants to on his property. Does he do what he's supposed to do? Not really. July 2021, the state come in and did an inspection on him. And he was de-watering, which they told him he needed to stop immediately. Did they were going to cease his permit if he didn't stop? That he was actually, he deceased mining activities within 50 foot of Rick Park Bumper that he was actually doing. They gave him time to come back and redo this. Well, let's see here, at least October, they come back and reevaluated. The pump was still there. He was still de-watering. They gave him another notice, told him if he didn't stop, they were going to start finding $500 a day. Finally, March 20, March 7, 2022, this is from the state that I got yesterday from Mr. Adam Paul. They finally went in and inspected and he finally had the pump from de-watering moved and had started putting in compliance. Now, if he's not complying with the state, folks, he's certainly not going to comply with the county. And I ask that y'all help me because of dust, I have asthma, and that's going to also be a health issue with people around this property. There's actually five other lots right beside me that Jason Riley, his brother, has established, which I am kind of subdue. And he hasn't sold his properties yet. Property values will be there now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So that I have signed up to speak.
All right. We'll now declare the public hearing closed. Comments from commissioners? Any discussion? Commissioner McGaw. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to follow up on a couple of facts that were brought to my attention. I do agree that this is a hard decision, how, for many reasons on both sides. However, I just wanted to be clear in a couple of facts that I found helpful. As much as I empathize with the last statement about de-watering and maybe not following the rules, that is hypothetical. And there is a rule in place that he will be fined if he does de-water. However, the plan is not to de-water. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. I believe what Mr. Pollard was speaking of is when he was de-watering, he was discharging into that repairing buffer area, which is not allowed by the state.
Okay. And then also, the second one for me would be precedence. So this particular family has owned this property for 50 years. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I think it has been along that long of a family line, of which then you look at 20 years, um, the Mayloo property. Well, the RV was purchased in December of 2021. So the precedence was already started with that, with that other mining, the Allen Grading Mine operational for almost 20 years.
Correct.
Okay. All righty. And then, so the buffer being 100, they've made the 200. It was six on the burms. Now we've moved from 10 to 15 to 20. So they are making those adjustments to work with the county. From a noise perspective, there is no blasting or rock crushing, just to reiterate that.
That is my understanding correct.
Visibility, you will not see it, yet you can see the Allen, the Allen Grading Mine.
The Allen Grading Mine, I do not know if it actually has burms built around it. If so, it's probably six foot, which was what was required by the ordinance.
Okay. And then I did not realize that this is a temporary, I know it's been said several times tonight, but temporary with the plan to make it a lake. I've been told geese as well, that's subject to. But it's three to four years. Is there a max on this? Or is that subject to, if it does go seven, 10 years, that's okay? I'm just curious how that.
So from a county perspective, we only are involved with the land use itself. So once it is rezoned for as rural agricultural conditional district, that mine can happen whenever. There's no time limit set on this rezoning request. The mining permit that will have to be obtained from the state, I'm not sure what the requirement is, if they have to renew after a certain number of years or what. But my understanding and talking with Mr. Riley is that this, you know, is expected to be a two to four-year mining process.
Okay. And then also from, from an economic impact, we have 2,000 individuals moving into Greenville annually. So, you know, I would just urge the board to think about being proactive on those decisions. So when it is brought up today to talk about the cost of, of really making things obtainable to retain folks in the area and making sure that we are, you know, not losing revenue to other counties to have to go out and to find that sand for the construction, so on and so forth, that is an important factor here. So I also just wanted to bring that, to highlight that. Other than that, I don't think I had any questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner White, you want to go next, please?
Sure, I will. And Commissioner Brown did, you asked a lot of the things I was going to ask. So just to reiterate, Mr. Riley is trying to be a good neighbor. He went back, increased the buffers, increased the burms since the last time. And there's already existing sand mines in the area, so it is consistent. And did you say the NCDEQ is responsible for site inspection? To make sure that he is in compliance with all the rules and regulations?
Correct, with the state rules. So our department, the planning department, will address any hours of operation that's not followed.
So if he's still mining 8 o'clock and there's a complaint, then your department will handle that and you will follow up on that. Okay. I just want to say, um, just a comment. Looking at all my notes here, I've been told that I look like I'm studying for an exam when I take notes. Gives me a lot of heartburn to tell a property owner what they can and cannot do with their property when they are using it within the land use plan, when it's consistent, and when they're not doing anything illegal. I know Mr. Riley has said that he is doing this for his elderly mother. And, um, I really, would really hate to be in a position where if an elderly family member of mine needed the income, that, you know, I was told, no, I cannot do something. That is not illegal. It's within the consistency and it's within the land use plan. So that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Nunn.
Thank you, Chair Holland. So just wanted to, I had a couple of questions, a couple.
Sorry. Yeah, I do. I've got to get, yeah. I felt it burning. So wanted to look back and reflect a little bit on the last time we heard from, from the Bryleys in the application. And the last time, we've heard a lot of the same comments and received a lot of the same feedback from the residents. And it's obvious to me that the Bryleys have taken steps to increase some buffering and increase setbacks. And I guess my question though is related to the vehicular traffic, which was one of the reasons that we found against approval last time. Found that it was consistent. We found that it was, but, but that the vehicular traffic was maybe a little bit too much. If we consider already have some mines operating, would the additional mine kind of set that over capacity for these roadways? And then second, the potential negative impacts for water. Now, I did hear from one of the representatives tonight that the plan was that it was to not de-water and that therefore it would not lower the water table for any of the active wells in the vicinity. Now, I guess my question to you is, is that would there be a problem with adding a condition that the, the mining operation not, um, not lower the water table? And not be, I guess the term used was de-watering. Is that a condition that would be appropriate for, um, for planning staff to adopt? Since this is a conditional rezoning plan and it is a temporary rezoning plan. And in fact, that's one of the things that, as I'm listening to the application this time around, is more persuasive to me, the fact that we are looking at a two to four-year window. You know, the area is filled with sand. We've got former, former mines that are great, great ponds and that are utilized. Y'all know me, I like a pond efficient. But in all seriousness, my, my real concern is though, it is porous, porous material. And we do know that if in sand mine, when we are mining, that it can impact the local water table if it's done a certain way. And what would be the problem for adding that condition? That it not, not impact the water table or that the methodology used on this particular site for this particular conditional zoning would not negatively impact the water table?
So a couple of things there. This is a conditional use district rezoning. So anything, any conditions that are placed on it, the applicant would have to agree to those conditions and accept those in order for it to be approved. Also, I think de-watering was mentioned at our, at our December 2023 meeting when this request was heard previously. And I believe it was discussed in a de-watering situation, that water is pumped out of the active mining area, but it's discharged right there on the site. So any changes to the water table should be very minor because that same water that's pumped out of the pit is discharged on the adjacent property and filtered back into the groundwater table.
Is there any study on what that does to the cell content, on runoff and things of that nature?
Well, that's something that the state would monitor with that de-watering.
Well, I'm not, I'm not worried about the state. I'm worried about our locality.
Right.
And I'm worried about the power that we have locally about making sure that the operations that we approve are, that we can, you know, walk and chew gum. At the same time, we need to support our local industry and we need to support economic development. But at the same time, we need to make sure that the processes that we're, we're going forward are going to not be detrimental to, not be detrimental to the Tar River that's nearby, not be detrimental to any of the creeks or streams, not be detrimental to the folks that are living right by. So I guess what I'm driving at, I'm inclined to support it if the Bryleys would agree to not negatively impact water in the area. I wonder if planning staff had made that request through the part, through this process. And I'm surprised, frankly, that I don't see it in a condition because that was one of the primary reasons that we denied it last time. And I would have expected to see it this time if we wanted to get over a hurdle. A buffer wasn't the hurdle last time. Vehicular traffic was, and I don't see anything here that cuts against that. So.
Okay.
I guess my question is, what can we do or can we, would the property owner agree to a condition that requires that, that we're not de-watering?
I believe it was mentioned that there was no de-watering plan on the site. So they do not plan to de-water. If you want to make that a condition, as long as my attorney's okay with that condition being placed on it. I'm, I'm.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes, Commissioner. So it is addressing an impact that this rezoning will have on the land? And as long as your condition addresses that impact?
Mr. Riley, would, would the applicant, would it be appropriate to ask the applicant to come forward and answer on the record whether or not they would be opposed to a condition that, that de-watering not be a part of the process of, of the mining operation? And they would take steps to make sure that the local waterways were not impacted through silk runoff, et cetera, through the operation?
Sure. And I believe as long as the chairman would like to call him back up.
Chair Holland.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Mr. Riley, if you'd like to come up and answer these questions, please, sir. Oh, you're welcome. Welcome back.
Yeah, nice to be back.
So, Mr. Riley, the question's for you. Would you agree to an additional condition that, that the mining operation would not be de-watering? I.e. not, there would not be active pumping off the, off the site that would potentially run off in the waterways and/or lower the water table through the, through the process of mining? And then two, I guess, a direct, that, that two to four-year window is really, is really what we're talking about?
Yep. That's easy, easy answer. First off, to de-water, you have to have a permit to do that.
Sure.
And we're not applying for a de-water permit to pump off-site. So, and, and the current permit that we're applying for will contain all surface runoff into the pit that we're digging. So legally, we don't, we don't want any award to move off-site.
So you wouldn't be opposed to adding that condition?
No.
To, to, or? And, um, and understood that, that your plan is two to four years. One of the things that, that has me leaning in support of the application is the fact that it's a minimized time period, not, not a long-term mine permit. And I'm not sure if that's something that we could limit. But, um, but I guess we have your word that it would be a two to four-year operation?
Well, um, we're currently mining it now. Judging on what we're doing now in the acres that's at this site, we would say in three to four years. It could be as soon as two. We have a lot of clients that already want to buy sand in the area and committed to buy. And if they do what their intentions are, you know, we'll be out of there pretty quick. But mining, when you're digging sand out of the ground, it's, it's all a matter of who drops to the door that wants to buy the sand, you know? It might be real busy now, next year will be slow.
Sure. Now, this is, and, and, Mr. Chair, this is my last question and I'm sorry that I'm rambling on here, but this is a, um, this is not directly related to this side mine, but I know that there have been questions in the past before this board as it relates to when sand mines are decommissioned and reclaimed, that the danger of having extremely high burms on site can pose dangers of their own. And wondered if, if a part of this plan is to, when it is reclaimed, to more naturalize the lake and the surrounding areas so that we don't have 20-foot, 15-foot high burms that are unnatural to the area?
All the burms will be removed.
Got it. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Fox Chair.
I, I have some question for staff.
Okay.
I want the audience to know, what is a buffer?
A buffer is the area of land that is set aside that will not be excavated. And typically, in this case, will serve as screening from the neighboring properties.
Okay. The next thing I want to know, who enforces that time period that was on the screen? Seven to seven?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM as far as hours of operation. That would be our responsibility as the planning department to enforce.
And you do monitor that closely?
We will, if we receive complaints, we will go out and investigate.
Well, we, we heard them tonight, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next thing I want, I heard, uh, clear water became stagnant. I think we got a environmentalist in here somewhere. What causes the water, when it's clear, to turn to stagnant water? Because see, I see a lot of stagnant water around.
Right. Well, I'm certainly not a environmentalist, but it could, could be a number of different factors that come into play. Sunlight, the flow of water, the amount of water. Right now, we're still in a drought scenario. So as the water decreases, it might not have as much oxygen remaining, which causes the algae to, to grow it.
You did pretty good because, you know, sometime past, I think I asked some scientists out of the western part of the state. Six scientists came in and talked about stagnant water because I was looking at so much of it in the area. When I go out and look at land and you talk about, as I say, to the staff, to this board, and to everybody here, we have the new form of gold called sand. You've heard that before, am I not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we have on this side of the river. We have more sand mines than anyone else. Now, I do know that there are people in this area who do not want more digging for the sand. But if we're going to grow, we're going to have to have the sand or we're going to have to pay more money to build on that land. When I go out and look, I look at the vegetation on the property. I look at the fact that I've lived over here most of my life and the sand is on the top of the land and you've not seen anything grow and it's white or yellow, I've seen it on both colors, then that sand does not produce very much and the crops are not there. So this land, I've gone out and picked some strawberries at the Bryley's field. I've gone out. I've gone out and looked at some of the crops they've grown, and it's not where that car is. And another thing that concerns me about Pitt County is trash. And you all hear that all the time.
Yes, ma'am, we did.
I rode the trash, I rode, I rode my trash eyes out in that area to remind myself. And it's pretty out there. Looks good. It's green. It's kept. There's no trash. There's no ugliness. I like it. So, that invites people to come visit, plant their land, play, do everything else here, and live and help pay for the taxes. What bothers me is that we're gonna have some things that people don't like, but in order for us to grow, we'll, we'll be heading to growth now. There's not very much on this side to support the families. And this family has done a lot to support families, but we've eaten out of the yard and done a lot of things. So, I'm, I'm, I'm leaning more towards granting this than I am against it. But I do want that enforcement of the time because when the gentleman got up here and talked about asthma, I had two relatives, my sister, my aunt, and a first cousin to die as a result of asthma. So, it's serious with my immediate family. So, please monitor that because I know what asthma can do for people who have that problem. I don't have any more questions.
Are you done?
Uh-uh. I said everything I wanted to say.
And I think you would. We have a motion on the floor.
What did he say?
You got something to say? Commissioner Manning, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in opposition, and I appreciate the Brileys doing and, and trying to make some accommodations. But I feel like I've tried to put myself in their place and in the place of the homeowners and the mobile park owners. What would I want if I was them? And I'm against, I just don't think I'd want to live beside all that banging and all the dust and the noise regardless. And it's nothing against the Brileys. They're good folks and, and, but I've got aerial maps of the area. There's a lot of sand out there in the north part of Pitt County. We don't have to mine it right next to somebody's house. And when Mr. Pollard bought his home, he was in a RA zoning, and I think he has an expectation that he wouldn't be bothered like this. I certainly would be if I had bought a home and built it and, and thinking that I'm in a area, I mean, what's, what's the purpose of having zone if you can't protect the people once they've invested in their property to build a home? So, in that regard, I, I'm, I just can't support this permit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner White.
I just had one more comment that I wanted to say. I had an appointment out of town today, and on the way back in, I was going north of the river to return to work, and I drove by a sandmine. It was very windy today, although I rolled the windows down on my vehicle, did not see any dust coming by, did not get any dust or sand in my car, and did not hear any noise. I just wanted to throw that out there that I had a real experience today by a sandmine.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Commissioner McGraw, will you please restate your motion? It's been so long. I think she's seconded, she ain't gonna talk.
I, I'm trying.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm trying to second it for...
I know, but we gotta give every commissioner time to talk, and everybody wants to be long with it.
Well, second it, then you can discuss it. So, I second his motion.
So, you got a motion. Commissioner McGraw, will you please restate your motion from 30 minutes ago? Don't forget to catch your microphone on.
Mr. Chairman, I simply stated that I vote to deny this request.
You have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Commissioner White.
I would like to make a motion.
Don't forget to catch your microphone on, please. Y'all want to do my job, and I got to do y'all's.
Apologize. I would like to adopt both of the motions presented by planning staff. There was two motions, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You have a substitute motion on the floor? You have a second?
I would like to adopt the motion consistent with the staff's recommendation with an addendum that there will not be any de-watering and a five-year, some type of timeline of, I'm not saying, I understand it's their property, however, that it's maybe time for update, reapply. I don't know what that looks like, but some type of honor to the timeline.
So...
Yeah. So, I believe that would be improper. I don't think, once we allow a conditional zoning for a property, we can restrict the time to use that property.
I apologize. Thank you for that clarity. So, taking away the time?
Correct.
With the condition that Commissioner Nunley had discussed on the de-watering?
That's, that could be my motion.
So, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? See, I believe this was to approve the sandmine. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any more discussion?
Which one are we voting on now? We've got two.
We're gonna vote on it. You got to go to the substitute motion first and foremost.
That's why I hope to...
Well, I, you ain't on that one. All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. This is to approve sandmine with the condition set forth by Commissioner White and Commissioner Brown. Six. All opposed? Motion carries six to three. Moving on to item number three, Mr. Hill. I hope we can move through this one a little faster.
Absolutely. I will do my best. The next rezoning request is from No Quarter Group LLC. The request is to rezone 13.56 acres of the property owned by Georgia M. Allen Heers, which is located on the southern side of NC 33 East, west of this intersection with Alvin Road, from rural residential to rural agricultural. If you look at the map here showing the site location, it's just south of NC 33 East, just about midway between the Village of Simpson and the Town of Brownson. Zooming in a little bit and showing the existing land use map, you'll note there is a, a heavy precedence of residential in the area as well as a few commercial sites located in that area. The Vision Pitt County 2045 Future Land Use Character Map shows this as being suburban residential. And that designation contains primarily the single-family detached homes and neighborhoods connected by interconnected streets. There are non-residential uses within this area, which should be located with frontage and access along the major highway or secondary road at major intersections or proximity to similar uses within the spatial separation buffers. Non-existent, uh, non-residential development should be designed in a context sensitive manner and may be considered on a case-by-case basis. This is typically located near existing residential and commercial development in areas that are experiencing growth, which this area wasn't identified as such. Utility access, on-site subject systems with community water service being provided, and in some cases, public sewer may be available if these areas are voluntary annexed into the city of Greenville. The density varies from one to three dwelling units per acre. The zoning map here shows the site being rural residential right now. The commercial areas that I spoke of, there's a daycare center located towards the west, towards Greenville. There's a used car lot there. And then this is the old service station at the intersection of Alvin Road and NC 33 East. The proposed use that they're seeking is rural agricultural. This area is primarily intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed throughout areas that are principally characterized as rural in nature. This district reflects a diverse nature of land uses within the predominantly rural areas and therefore permit a wide array of land uses. Pitt County Planning Staff finds that the request is consistent with the vision Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as suburban residential, which allows for the mix of residential and commercial land uses. The areas proposed for rezoning has frontage directly onto NC 33 East as it, and is in close proximity to the rural agricultural zoning district, which is just north of NC 33 East. And if I could, I will just point that out because I failed to do so. You can see the dark green areas, the rural agricultural area just to the north of NC 33. This site is located to the south, which is rural residential, so it's at very close proximity to the zoning district that they are seeking. Planning Staff also finds that this request is reasonable and in the public's interest because the rural agricultural zone properties directly across from NC 33 East and any non-residential uses that are proposed will require a site plan approval by staff. The Planning Board reviewed this rezoning request and it's March 19th, excuse me. Planning Board meeting and voted seven to two to recommend denial of the request, citing that it was not consistent with the vision Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan, and it was not reasonable because the board believed that non-residential uses that were permitted within the rural agricultural zoning district were not compatible with the surrounding area and the existing residential uses. Your recommended motions are included in your package from staff, and at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I would declare the public hearing closed.
You have one person signed up to speak, Marvus Evans.
And, Mr. Chair, she's coming, if I may read this statement. Well, with this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the No Quarter Group LLC zoning amendment. Please state your name and address and the name of any organization that you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Marvus Evans, and I'm here to speak on the resident, uh, the zone, rezoning from residential to agricultural. I've lived in that area most all of my life, and I see that it is going to be a problem with trying to deal with this situation as you don't know, we don't know what building, we don't know what is going to go on. I did call and I spoke to Mr. Eric. I called Mr. Ben Rogers, but he did not answer his phone, and I was told it could be a, it was going to be a commercial, a concrete building. That's what he said, a concrete building. We don't know what that means. It could be a hog farm, it could be a chicken farm. We don't know exactly what it's going to be. But I do want to know and tell you that that is a very busy highway. Highway 33 is very busy and it's dangerous. I can tell you an experience that we've had no more than about a couple of months ago when someone was driving to the next door neighbor's home, and they was hit by a car out of the blue. And the person who was driving the car had to be cut out of the car, out of the vehicle, which rolled into the ditch. They had to be rushed to the ER, okay? Another incident was happened on that road last year, whereas this lady was on her way home, lifting gravel on her way home, and she was hit and killed on Highway 33, right not too far from where this, this commercial agricultural site is to be placed, wanted to be placed. And she died. A driver was intoxicated. The highway has a 45 miles an hour, there's no stoplights. People drive however they want to on that highway. It's very dangerous. Two lanes on that highway, 45 miles per hour. We don't know what type of building, what type of agricultural business that this is going to be, but I do know, and I will tell you this, I myself five years ago was driving into my own driveway, and I was hit so hard, driving in my driver, turned to my left, and I tipped so hard, I spun around and I headed back towards the ER. Praise God, I didn't get killed on the highway. My car was damaged. I had to take, that, that car was taken. I couldn't even drive the car anymore. Okay, it was totaled. There, this, this property value on here will go up. We have, we have senior citizens who live in the neighborhood, they are on fixed income. The property value, the value of property goes up. We know that. But we know that this is going to go up, we know this is going to be high taxes, we know that it's going to be increasing, anything, everything that goes on there. We want to make sure it's safe for our seniors who live in that area as well, okay? Also, I want to say that there's a conflict with not knowing what is going to be out there, nor is possibility it could be a concrete building there that carries moach and all of that other stuff. We don't know what it's going to be, but we know there's a lot of noise already on that highway, and that would be more noise. And it's right in front of my driveway, okay? So, you see the lights and thing going and coming all of the time. So, you do have the noise that I am very concerned with, and I don't think it is a very good idea to place any kind of agricultural in this residential area at this time. I would appreciate you looking at this again. I do see it is a conflict with interest, and it is very dangerous, as I foresee, and I just think that it should be thought about and maybe, you know, something else could come out of it, but I don't think it's a good idea right now. And I thank you very much for your attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Nobody else on the...
No one else signed up to speak?
All right. We would declare the public hearing closed.
Could I say something? I think in late, but I didn't know you had to go.
Yes, ma'am. If you'll come on and kind of make it brief, but we're running a little behind.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Valerie Hines. I live at 6525 NC Highway 33 East. It is a danger zone. It is very much a hazardous condition simply because it's only two lanes, and as stated earlier, it's only supposed to be 45 miles an hour. I'm being passed and I'm going 50. Very dangerous. So, I had to slow down and move over so this guy didn't cause an accident trying to pass me. It wasn't clear, and it was on the yellow, straight yellow. Another concern I have are the increases that we're experiencing currently in the trucks, and we have the buses, the school buses. People don't want to stop for the school buses. Some of them are passing them on the opposite side. That's dangerous for our children. We don't have a stoplight beyond Speedway. The next stop sign we have is at the post office. Okay, that's almost what, five, six miles? Give or take? I'm not from here. I moved here in 2023 from Michigan. When you say highway, I think of a four lane. This is just a two lane, very, very different, and no one's respecting the law, and very seldom do we have police patrolling that area unless there is a car accident. I see the, I'm on the cor, right there at the corner of Alvin, I'm in between those two car lots, and I see the lights as they flash in the morning or at night at 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock. The traffic noise is ridiculous. I'm a little hesitant also because no one states what the intent is, what the purpose is. I called Mr. Hill this morning. No, I text, I started texting Ms. Collins. Then she said that it was Jonas Hill. It was the planning department. And I asked, what was the purpose stated on the application? And he let me know that you don't have to state it. So, basically, you can apply for a rezoning request, and you don't have to tell anyone why you want to do it or what your intent is. I don't want to be around hazardous material. I already have a, two fuel tanks on my property, and I can't get anyone to remove them. This is just a bad idea unless you're gonna put up some stoplights or you're going to increase the lanes from two lane to four lane. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am. I will now declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a couple of questions. This seems like the opposite of what we're...
This seems like the opposite of what we're normally hearing. Usually it's going from a designation of less impact improvements to more impact improvements, less density, the more density, less, more, less traffic to more traffic. I just want to make sure I'm not reading anything wrong, but am I understanding correctly that this is a petition to, or an application to move from a rural residential to a rural agricultural, which is a less, which is presumably a less of an impactful designation under our land use?
It is what I would refer to, and Matt's probably going to cringe when I say the word downzoning. You're going from a more residential to a lesser residential, more open space agricultural use, however, yeah, so.
What, what type of potential? So being a planner, you would know this, we don't hear it in the application, we don't see it, but what types of onerous land uses could potentially arise through a downzoning to a rural agriculture from a residential? Presumably, if it's a residential, there might be, you know, a little bit more protections against high-density poultry operations, something of that nature. Would rural agricultural open the door to and operate a little bit more, I guess, a stacked kind of agricultural setup that may be onerous to surrounding residents?
So, I anticipated this question. I've got up here on the, on the presentation, some of the uses that are allowed in the RA but are not allowed into RR zoning district. And I believe that your places, my staff has prepared some documents that kind of show what the uses are allowed, but I went ahead and put a few examples up here of those uses that are not allowed in RR but are allowed in RA.
Okay. And my last question, is there a tax rate differential, add the law on tax rate differential between a property that's designated rural residential and one designated rural agricultural?
I would defer to Russell on that one, I believe, both of them being residential. Is there a difference, Russell?
I can answer that as well, and it would depend on the use as to whether or not any exemption applied in an agricultural setting, but the zoning designation does not impact the tax rate, the tax rate is uniform across the county, it's just if you satisfy an exemption within the tax code, you might be eligible to enjoy an exemption.
Last thing I was asking, I'm sorry about this, Mr. Chair, but, and maybe, maybe someone with the Planning Board will hear this. I, for one, do not like to go against votes and recommendations of the Planning Board in the absence of reasoning otherwise, but what we're missing here is any reasoning from the Planning Board as to why they denied it, other than kind of a conclusory statement that they, they viewed that, well, the statement's right there, that it's not reasonable because the non-residential use is permitted with the agricultural zoning of presumably the list that you presented, it's not compatible with the surrounding area and existing residential uses, but there was no stated reason for the denial in, in our packet, I guess formally, maybe that was just a, yeah, I guess that's the, in, in the staff recommendation page there, no reasons for denial, it's just NA.
I believe, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board, I believe their main concern were the industrial-type uses that were related to the agricultural production, is what they conveyed to staff.
Could you pop back on the board that, that list again? Okay, those would be my questions, if you could just leave it there for me, just to look at, thank you.
And again, these are not all of, all of the uses, just a sampling of some of the uses.
Are you still thinking?
Oh, I'm finished asking.
I didn't know you were down there. Commissioner White, then Commissioner Manis.
Mr. Hill, you did say, so going from RR to RA is lessly, is less dense than RR, correct?
Correct, from a residential perspective, yes.
So that would, from a residential standpoint, costs less traffic than what the RR would cost, correct? From a residential standpoint of course.
Yes, so in RA, the square footage for a lot, let's say they were looking at strictly subdivided property for residential use, you would be required in the RA to develop it a minimum 30,000 square feet. RR, you're allowed to develop it 25,000 square feet, so it would be less dense.
I know a hog farm is not going there because North Carolina has a law moratorium that prevents any more hog farms in the state of North Carolina, that was passed back in the 90s. Is it true, and I know that it's not a conditional use permit, so the applicant didn't, you don't have, didn't necessarily have to state, but I have heard that the applicant wants to build a house there and put up an office for their business, they're going to park trucks, just park trucks there and do his bookkeeping there, is that what you have heard also?
Yes.
Okay.
But, again, we cannot go based off of that assumption.
Absolutely not.
We have to look at the full list of uses.
I understand that you have to look at this, but that is what I had heard, so I just wanted to ask if the Planning Staff had heard the same thing, so thank you.
Commissioner Manis?
Mr. Hill, I noticed on this plot that's being rezoned is a smaller portion of the actual parcel. Now, if, I mean, the parcel itself is much bigger, and it's like 57 acres, and I know that there are residences down VA Merritt Lane, would that not have possibly potentially affect more than just what you're showing on the, on the request?
So, any use that is only permitted in the rural agricultural area will only be allowed on that 13 acres that is being rezoned. So, in a rezoning situation, you don't necessarily have to go with the parent parcel, you can zone a portion of that parcel for that specific use.
Does that mean it would be subdivided, the parcel? Because it looks like there's a sale of, sale or agreement ending.
It could be subdivided, but that does not have any impacts on the zoning.
So the residences down VA Merritt Lane wouldn't necessarily be beside something that, because this is a lot of stuff that can be placed there by those residences that if it stays RR, these things wouldn't be allowed.
Correct.
And here we're back at the same point in the previous, you've got people who have built homes, bought homes, with an expectation that zoning is going to protect their home, and now you're going to go backtrack and allow something that might be, have some detrimental effect to their enjoyment of their home, so I can't support that.
Commissioner Bowles? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. You know, I'm a firm believer of recognizing and supporting the Planning Board. They denied this request. The two ladies that came here, they spoke passionately, critically about the conditions that exist if we approve this request. It's no way humanly possible that I could request approval of this, I have to vote to deny this request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? What's pledged for?
I make a motion that we deny.
Second? You got a motion to deny, second? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
I do need a, I do need a statement on the reasoning, it could be in line with the Planning Board's recommend, or the Planning Boards as well, but I do need a.
I can give myself my statement. In, in line with the Planning Board would be fine.
Yeah, so we would need a motion, a second, and a vote on that this is either consistent or inconsistent, and I, due to it being denied, the reasons that it's not reasonable. If it is consistent with the land use plan, then we need reasons as to why it's not reasonable, or you can state that it's inconsistent, but we would need a motion, second, and a vote on that as well.
And I've got the motion that the Planning Board used on the screen.
Okay.
Now, didn't we vote in favor of that? I think, didn't I, didn't I vote in favor of that? Because I think it's a dangerous highway.
So we vote against denying?
Yeah. My, my motion is the Planning Board reviewed my rezoning request at its March 19 meeting and voted seven to two to recommend denial of the request and to advise that it is not consistent with the envisioned of Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan, and is not reasonable because the Board believes that the non-residential use permitted within the rural agricultural zoning district are not compatible with the surrounding area and the existing residential uses. That is my motion.
Does that satisfy?
That's fine, it, it is, she's stating that the motion is it's not consistent with the provision, so as long as we do that and then have a second and a vote.
You have a motion?
No.
Second, you got a second? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I want to understand.
Oh, please.
I want to make sure that I cast my vote the way I want it to cast.
All right, which way?
Planning Board denied the request, that means it won't change.
Correct.
And that means that it will be, the traffic will be.
In theory, remain the same.
It will remain the same?
Yes.
And then if we had changed it to RA, it would have been less?
No.
No, no. I just want to make sure, because I really think that highway is dangerous, because you come by, people pull out, you just can't stop off it, because it just pull out and it's a curve right round in one of those places. So, did I cast my vote the way I wanted to cast? Because it's, it's a dangerous curve, it's a dangerous highway.
What is it that you want to happen?
What did I want that to happen?
Do you want approved of the zoning or not approved of the zoning? Do you want it to change from RR to RA, or do you want it to stay RR? That's the question.
I want it to change to RA, that make it slow down? No, you're not going to change the, you aren't going to change the traffic.
I don't think that's a guarantee one way or the other.
We don't have information on it. You haven't been presented with information.
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
It appears to me that, that if, if you approve it, then the, he had that list of all those different things that could be built there, which would, in my mind, if you, I don't really think it's going to have an effect on traffic one way or the other, but right now this area is residential, more residential, there are some businesses there that have existed there for a long time.
Yeah.
But, if you change it, then they'll be able to put some things there that, other than residences. The RA allows, that wholly, there you go, that's, that's what is allowed in RA but not in the current RR, and you see convenience stores, supply stores, hardware stores, restaurants, exactly, you see a lot of stuff other than residences. That's the reason I'm not voting to do it, because I think that is a primarily residential area, there've been a lot of subdivisions built out there, and I don't think there needs to be more businesses out there, because once we pass it, it doesn't matter what their intention is, they can turn around and do whatever they want to on that property. So that's the reason I'm against changing it.
Commissioner Nunn?
May I make a comment to, I, I hope to kind of clarify it for you, to, to vote, to deny it will be in support of the two ladies who came forth and spoke. I believe that, Mary, does that help you in understanding which way you, you vote They wanted to keep, because it's fast, a lot of traffic, and fast traffic, they spoke against changing it, but it's, but the Planning Board also voted against changing it. So, so our vote to keep it as it is, it would be in support of the residence request.
Commissioner Nunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if, if those that made the motion are not in opposition to this, and part of the problem that I have with the denial, and I'm loaded to go against the denial, but I would like to flesh a little bit more out, make a finding about the general nature of this application. I'd be a little bit more inclined if it were conditional type of setup, where we had a little bit more information before us, but specifically, a convenience store, a restaurant, livestock animal services, garden center, retail nursery, these are, these are uses that are permitted under rural agricultural that may actually be more high-impact with a higher traffic than a rural residential. And so, just in my, in my mind, I, I think rural residential and rural agricultural is moving down in terms of impact, but when I've heard the application here today, the fact that there are some items here, and I'm specifying factual basis that the specific use of a convenience store, a restaurant, a landscape services or garden center could potentially be higher volume and, and maybe have more impact directly in line with the concerns with, with the people that we heard from tonight. It's not to say that I wouldn't support it in the future for a different type of application, but for those reasons, if, if the ones that made the motion, that would be the factual basis that I would find, that, that I would deny the request for my vote against.
All right. Can you put the motion back up there, please? All right, you have a motion, I believe we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All the parties, please raise your right hand. Mary, you didn't vote. Wake up!
I'm, I'm here to tell you, I like, I like commerce, I like businesses, and we need them, but when it comes down to the difference between life and, and, and a store or business in this situation, it's, it's dangerous. And I see farm equipment pulling out, that's more people getting hurt. So my vote, I want my vote to go for that, to keep people from getting hurt, to, to get people to come on the highway and not worry about having an accident and be worried about somebody ramming into you. So which one of those in, is that, that the vote, because when you say you're denying the request, is that what I'm thinking about?
You would, you would, you're denying.
I just want to make sure.
You're denying the opportunity for there to be a hardware store, or a sheep store, or that sort of thing.
So she would need to vote?
She would need to agree with affirmative of the vote to deny.
Well, then I'm with it. I'm with that, that's count my vote for that. I just want to know what a vote, I'm just sorry I would hold you up.
You're fine.
I'm about to.
We're going to sit here till you, you figure it out.
Uh-oh, we got it.
I know what's going on, ma'am, till you figure it out.
I just figured it out.
All right. It was five to four, motion failed. Motion passed. We're moving on to item number nine, items for report, Pitt County Schools Nutrition Program. Rachel Wilson. Ratchet Wilson.
As long as Wilson is.
I hope you're not doing anything that's going to be confusing to this board because it's already been a very long night.
I can't promise that.
Lord Jesus Christ.
I cannot promise that, I will try my best. Am I controlling this?
You are.
Okay.
And Mommy Wilson is coming forward. I just wanted to thank her for coming at the request of Commissioner Ann Floyd Huggins to talk about school nutrition. And so she has a presentation for you this evening and we welcome you to our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm with Pitt County Schools School Nutrition Department. I've been here in Pitt County since close to eight years. I have over 30 years, I got 31 years in school nutrition. I love my school nutrition work. So I'm here to give you an update, like make sure you understand what school nutrition does. So we are here because the National School Lunch Program started up in, back in 46, 1946, and it's a fairly assisted meal program to help people that need meals, students that needs meals out there while they're in school. It can be private or public, nonprofit, I'm kidding. It can be public or nonprofit, private schools and residential childcare institutions. They can provide these meals. They provide nutritionally balanced, low cost, free lunches and breakfasts to children each school day. So this is during the school years when we do the National School Lunch Program. It's not during the summers. During the summers, we offer the summer feeding program, but they were talking about school lunch and school breakfast. So parents can apply for meals if they need any assistance in paying for the meals through the free reduced meal application. Children, we look at the children's information, their family household incomes that are below 130% of the federal poverty level, or those receiving SNAP or food stamps or TANF that qualify for free meals. Then to get to reduce section, it would be those families incomes between 130% and 185% of fairly poverty level will qualify for reduced lunch and reduced breakfast. And then you have the free reduced applications that are offered every year. They do change in the amount that they, the earning levels, as you can see with those different benefit levels at each school year is requested by the parents or students can pick them up at the school. We have them on our website, we have them at the school level, we have them at central office. But they have to do it each school year. You cannot use a prior information. They have until October 1st of every year to re-apply for the application. They do get carryover for the first 30 days of the school year of their meal status. So the actual, yes, okay. So the Scott National School Lunch is funded through the USDA. We do get our funding through the Food and Nutrition Services at this time. That may be changing, but that's how it is currently. So they administer the, the funds that comes down through DPI, Department of Construction. Again, at this time, that may change. And it comes to us for the meals that we serve. So that is our reimbursement that we get from the federal government. Now, in 2023, our program, we did 1.361 million breakfasts and 2.5 million lunches here in Pitt County and received about close to 14 million in reimbursement for all those meals. So that's what we get from the federal government down to DPI to us once we put in our claim for the meals that we did serve. And that would be for your breakfast and your lunches. We also offer the after-school SNAP program and we have the fresh fruit vegetable program at nine of our elementary schools. So that is an elementary grant that we can do there. Now, we have nutrition standards that we have to follow. And in Pitt County, we do a K8 menu for lunch, but the actually it's got a K5 and a 6/8 for lunch. And for lunch, you have to have a half a cup of fruit for the elementary, middle school students, three eighths cup of vegetables, which we offer to half cup here in Pitt County. We don't give them one three eighths cup. For a fourth cup, we actually give them two half cup servings of vegetables. Grains are one to two ounces. We always usually offer two ounce grain and meat. The regulations is one to two ounces. We offer two plus ounces a day and then a half, I mean, a whole cup of fluid milk. And then high schools, they get a cup of fruit and a cup of vegetable. And we offer those in two half cup servings of each, so they can mix around by wanting to get or two of the same. They get two ounces of grain or more and they get two ounces of meat, meat alternative or more and a cup of fluid milk. Now, for breakfast, we do offer, which is the first line item, they have to have a fruit offered, a whole cup of it. We offer two half cups of fruit, so they can choose from that. Then they have grains and meats that they can, in combination from one to two ounces that they can get. And then they have the milk component, which is eight fluid ounces. We do have to have at breakfast at least a half a cup serving of fruit. It has to be on their plate for us to count it as a reimbursable meal. There's a minimum at breakfast and lunch to have at least three items on their tray to count and get a reimbursement. If not, we have to charge a la carte prices. At lunch, they have to have at least one half cup of fruit or vegetable on their tray to be counted as a reimbursable meal plus two other items. So both breakfast and lunch, they have to have either a fruit or vegetable offered on their plate, be taken before they come up through the line and at least two more items. So a minimum of three items at breakfast and three items at lunch that they have to have to count as a reimbursable meal. We do have to meet the nutritional guidelines and they keep getting stricter and stricter every year. We have minimized, well, they've cut back on the sodiums. We're going through another sodium change lowering in 2027. They, no added fats, excuse me, no, yeah, no added fats has gone away in 2025, starting next school year on certain products. And our fluid milk, they're proposing to go whole milk to be offered. But right now we offer 1% in skim milk. That's what is on our guidelines at this time that we put out there. We have to meet calories for all the meals. So calories for the grade levels, as you can see, are posted up there. There's amount of calories that have to be offered per the week and divided by per the day. And for the students, and we are all listed on that once a year. So we have to make sure, we have to turn in data and it's analyzed to show that we did offer the amount of calories, that sodium levels are correct and then other nutrient stuff that are followed and maintained. So those are the things we have to do to maintain getting our reimbursement back to our plate and to our funds to pay for more produce, fruits and vegetables, grains and meats that we get from multiple vendors throughout North Carolina that we bring in. Is there anything else? No, that was the main thing. So we talked about the program, what we offer, and again, summer feeding is coming up. So I do hope you all come out and take that, look for where we're offering it at. But National School, National School Breakfast is a great resource for our students and our meals. Participation keeps continuing rising and the students are enjoying new offerings all the time. We keep trying out new products and it seems to be one of our very well this district.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I noticed you left when she got up to speak after putting this on the agenda. So she probably wants you to go through your whole spiel, but we will not be doing that.
No, I will not. Mr. Chairman asked that, but I'm sorry, but I did have to.
I'm busy.
But Ms. Wilson, really, thank you for coming. And I'm sorry I didn't hear all of your presentation, but I do want to say, and the reason I wanted to, wanted you to come and talk about it, just to, to tell us that the menus, that the foods and the menu or whatever that's, that, that are served at the Pitt County Schools, that they are nutritionists. I wanted to, to hear that and, and also because it's sad for me to say that this, the meal at school might be the only meal that some children, some students will, excuse me, will get in that day because we have food insecurities here in Pitt County and across North Carolina, of course. But I do thank you for coming and I'm sure you, you told us how nutrition it is. I didn't hear it all, but, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and our menus are posted on the website. The parents can see it, elementary students still get the menu posted, sent home to them. So there's a lot of options out there. It's changed in my 30-plus years of this work and it keeps growing towards what the students are wanting and meeting the regulations. So we have to find the happy medium to meet all those regards.
All right.
Thank you for asking this question, sir.
Any further questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna, what? We're gonna take two minutes? If you have to use the bathroom, please do so, then we're gonna power through the rest of this meeting. All right. We are, we are back. Now we will move on to Pitt County Administrative Building and Planning and Needs and Assessment. Mr. Farkas and Mr. Corley.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you and glad to be back in session here. This is item for report on our planning and needs assessment for a new county administration building. The engineering department is hard at work with our consultant, JKF Architecture. John Farkas is here tonight to show you his findings. And this will include information for replacement of the Pitt County Office Building facility as well as the buildings downtown. So I will let John present. Again, this is item for report, just to give you an idea of the space that we actually need and what those costs may be if we move forward with these projects.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners and Mad Manager, thank you. I'm John Farkas, Principal of JKF Architecture. We, we started back in December working with the county to determine the programmatic requirements and scope of a total project to construct a new office building in order to modify or add to existing county buildings for Pitt County government to house multiple departments, including but not limited to all departments currently located in the county office building site, all departments currently located on property behind the courthouse on, between Second Street and First Street, any additional departments as determined by the manager. And the ones that we did extensive interviews on included the county manager's office, tax assessor, tax collector, registered deeds, financial services, county attorney, legal department, engineering, planning and inspections, human resources, information technology or MIS, veterans affairs, public health, environmental health, planning, board of education, I'm sorry, board of elections, the public information office, Pitt Area Transit, social services and economic development. The overall process included interviews and reviews with all departments and review of their departmental organizational chart, review of their existing facilities and evaluation of all the county land assets, consideration of alternative sites even for private sector and development of phased or comprehensive approach to consolidating all the county office facilities. We also developed an overall budget and cost for all the alternatives. Just to give you a quick summary, so the properties that we're looking at, obviously this is the Pitt County Office Building now where you currently have your county offices near the hospital. We also looked at the downtown facilities that you have, most importantly being where the tax office is right now. The county courthouse is right there and then you still have some land over on the, on the left side of that as well. We also looked at the Pitt County Office Park where we're at currently because there's land here. It's basically build ready to go in order to consolidate facilities and it seemed like a, a natural site to even start doing this. We also, last year we finished sheriff's office, which is in the upper left property. And we also looked at the tech center that you have and how that was utilized. Of course, you can see the jail in the upper part of the picture. We also looked at Alice Keane because this is a major piece of property. You're building on it now, your, your new gym. But in our discussions with the emergency operations management, there was a desire to have a facility over there for emergency operations that would work in tandem with the facility that you have at the tech center right now. So what we came up with was a number of projects and we looked at it comprehensively to bring all the county office programs basically onto one site, under one roof, sort of a one-stop shopping model. And this is the Pitt County Office Park. And over there, what we were proposing, your needs for the county manager's office and all of the county office facilities except for social services and Pitt County Schools was about 80,000 square feet of space is what you needed to do all those functions. And so what we've, what we have, what we're recommending is construction of a two-story, 80,000 square foot building right in the middle of the campus. This is your new gym. This is where we're at right now. And there's a lot of parking associated with that, but the site is basically ready to handle a brand-new building and so it makes a lot of sense to do it. We also looked at social services, which has a large space need. They are in, currently in the county office building as well. They're scattered amongst multiple, you know, the four-story, five-story building that's there. It's very inefficient. And so what we looked at was constructing them a 47,000 square foot building, two stories, and have it right next to the social services building that's here. And that, those, both of those projects made a lot of sense and I'll get into some more numbers with you shortly. We also looked at the idea of the emergency operations center on the south side of the river over near Alice Keane. Again, oops, sorry. You have a infrastructure that's already there. You've got a road in place and we proposed to put a new emergency operations center, about a 14,600 square foot building that would serve as the emergency operations center. And it would have complete facilities for an emergency. We also looked at the Pitt Area Transit, which is currently in the building behind the old county office building, sort of squeezed into that building back there. And we actually discovered that the Pitt Tech Center on this end of the building over here has a large open space that we could actually put Pitt Area Transit there. There's already built in parking for them in terms of all of their vehicles and everything that they would need in order to operate sort centrally out of this facility. What I would summarize is that the county administration functions, and I apologize, you can't really read that, but you're currently between the county office building, the development services building where engineering is, the tax assessor's office down on 10th, Second Street and the tax collectors plus economic development. They're sitting in right now in about 144,000 square feet. That also includes Pitt County Schools in there as well. So really what you're using right now is around 80,000 square feet, or I'd say 85,000 square feet of space for all of these county functions scattered all over the place. What you really need and what your need, the needs assessment shows is that you need about 147,000 square feet of space. And when you look at how inefficient your current space is, we know that we can do 147,000 square feet very efficiently, which would help your operations. It would help you serve the public better and, and have everybody, so you're actually about 74% deficient on your space needs. What we've identified up there on the top of the screen, and I'll try to read some of these numbers after, I can see that that's not printing out very well. Just give me a second here. The county administration building that we, we programmed at this point needs about 80. The needs for that building, the one that I showed initially, is about 80,000 square feet and has a price tag of about $48 million. We also have listed a new social services building at about 47,000 square feet of space for $27 million. We looked at the, a couple of different options on the emergency operations center. One of, one was to build the brand-new facility, which we require us to run a fiber optics network all the way across, all the way out to that site because there isn't one out there. So we would have to do that, but we'd need about 14,600 square feet with a price tag of about $12.1 million for that building. The alternative option for that was to actually use the development services building, which is on the county office park, and actually see if we can renovate that building, possibly fill it in and do a complete gut renovation, put emergency operations in there. And the only reason we looked at that was because the tower is right next to it. We wouldn't have to run the new fiber optics line for that. If we could renovate that building, it'd be about $10.7 million. However, we're not 100% sure that that building is structurally adequate to function as an emergency operations center. We think it's so old that it may not meet the new code requirements that we would need to have in the building in order to renovate it effectively. The alternative to that was knock the building down and build a brand-new one right in the same footprint. So all your emergency operations could stay right next to the tower. That was actually an option that we looked at. We also looked at the Pitt Area Transit. It was about 5,300 square feet of renovation space for $2.7 million. That end of the building doesn't have proper HVAC, electrical, all the things you would need to run that, so we would, but the shell is there, so we would be spending that money to renovate that area. that area. But you also wouldn't have to spend a lot of money on site development. And the final thing we did look at, which is a small thing afterwards, was to look at the agricultural center alternatives for the soil and water conservation area, which is over here. We have some people in this old area where the USDA was who are sort of closeted back there. We want to get them over in the mainstream and actually do a renovation of that area and upgrade everybody to fit them in, which in turn would allow you to use the rest of this building over here for other county functions. Now, none of this included Pitt County schools as part of this, part of the dollars, but to construct all the projects at once, again, was around $92 million. And your options for consideration that we were recommending was to completely do all the projects as one. Your long timeline would actually be the new county office building would be your critical path on that. But once you complete all those projects, you can vacate the county office building, all of the Second Street properties, and possibly Development Services Building if we move the EOC. You could provide one-stop services for county residents, and your costs would be more controllable over a shorter period of time because you're not trying to do one project and then wait, wait, and then you do another project. All the costs that I have presented have a life on them, and if you don't do it within a certain amount of time, that project's going to get more expensive the longer you wait. The other alternative was to, in fact, just construct the new administration building, but you cannot release the county office building site for sale. So if you really wanted to get rid of the county office building site and turn it over to, say, the private sector, you couldn't really do that because you are still in that building. That would leave social services in the old administration building. It would mean that residents still have to go to multiple places for service, and you could, in fact, actually consolidate social services to two floors instead of them being scattered through multiple floors. You'd probably leave the PAT, Pitt Area Transit, and the emergency operations at the existing site, but they'd be in antiquated facilities. You would have significant vacated space in the old administration building that may not be utilized, and you'll have continued escalating maintenance costs on that building, continue to pay for existing utilities for what is a pretty inefficient old building. And also, those projects over time, if you don't do them all at once, and you're going to phase them over a longer period of time, in the end, they're going to end up costing you more than if you just sort of went in and did them all phased at one time. We put together just some imagery because I think, you know, when we were talking about the office park, there's a definite architecture that's here, there's a new gym that's being built, and then there's some buildings that, these three buildings were all built in the late 80s, early 90s. And so we would want to design in context with these if we were out here where we would actually just pick up on the architectural cues, but we'd be in, end up creating what I would call 21st century buildings that look as modern as, for instance, Sheriff's Building that's right there in that one slide right there where you can see that, but a lot of different imagery of contemporary-looking buildings that are very efficient to operate. Of course, interiors and servicing the county residents, but doing it in a mindful way so that when they come there, they're welcome to the building, it's easy, you can protect people's security and privacy while you're serving the public. And all of these, all of the services from tax to engineering to inspections would all be under one comprehensive roof. Are there any questions? Because I've got a bunch of other slides, but I'm not sure you're ready for that. Thank you, sir. So what's the plan for Pitt County schools if they're not included? I can show you a couple possibilities if you want me to. I will zip on that far. So this is actually the plan we came up for Pitt Area Transit to go over into the tech building, okay? And currently, this would be the renovation area, but this entire area right here of that building is going to the area of state. So it's an area that Pitt County schools could actually move into, and it wouldn't require a tremendous cost to upfit it because it's kind of already offices and meeting rooms and things like that. So you could get them out of the building holistically. The other options to look at, this is the agricultural center that we're in right now. This entire half of the building is vacant, will be vacant once we move two, a couple of offices out of the back area over here and move them over there. So you have that entire area which could be used. You could put the board of elections there if you wanted to. Board of Elections is actually in this area up here. So they're there, but in theory, you could actually move them right over here. They would be here, which is one of your main voting stations. It kind of makes sense from an adjacency standpoint. And plus, then you'd have all of this available that Pitt County schools need. So in theory, you just basically are going to move, and then you're not going to have to build them a new building. You can just use the existing space that you have in order to move them here.
Did you look at including Pitt County schools in the square footage or the admin building?
To include them in the admin building? Yeah, they were included. We were already in 80,000 square feet just for the admin building function.
How much square footage would there need to be? I think that was something that...
We actually did not hear any of that part.
So how many did you plus?
Yeah, and Jen is maybe able to speak to actually how the financial arrangement is with the county schools. I know that they, the county, they pay the county lease money for the space in the county office building, and so I think the thought is that maybe there's an arrangement that we could find space for them and utilize those same funds to either rent them a space or have discussions with them about building a space somewhere else that better suits their needs.
That's right. So in this study, although we know that we have to provide space for Pitt County schools, we didn't determine that it was a necessary adjacency to the other functions or the other departments in terms of how they interact. So all of the options for board of education remain on the table. We currently budget close to $400,000 in the school's budget as they lease back the upper floors in our existing building. So option one is to find them space that's sufficient that would encompass about that same lease cost. And if you could rent the same square footage in another appropriate location, that would be an easy move. Alternatively, finding a space that they could move into in existing county space with the same lease allocation depending upon the same square footage. Another alternative is to determine whether or not there are available restricted school funds to build something. They've talked about their Caffey Taft property, but we, for purposes of keeping this project moving forward, think you still have your full array of options for board of education on the table, but there is not a final recommendation or a recommendation on which one.
And just one more question. I know this is premature, but do we have a figure of what we may recoup on the sale to the private sector of the properties we're going to vacate?
I think one of our first steps in that, if we move forward with this project, is to probably get appraisals on all the properties that will become available out of what we moved from and determine what that is. I've heard lots of numbers thrown around over the years about specifically the Pitt County Office Building complex, what that may be worth, minus what it may take to demo it, because it's going to be a significant demolition project for somebody to use that property. Certainly, we'd like to keep it, get it to somebody's hands that pays taxes for the property as well. So that's an important point there.
If you look, if you look at your current tax values, though, you're looking at under $1 million for each of your properties on your downtown as a current tax value, and you're looking at $12 or $14 million value on your county office building. And of course, that would all be changed by an appraisal if need be, but of that, only about $2 million is attributed to the land, and the remainder based on a price per square foot for the building that we know would be demolished. So I do believe that appraisals would be worthwhile to determine the true value of those properties, but that would be your tax value, which I think is not critical to your base since we're not paying taxes on those property right now. Gives you sort of that floor or starting point to know what you're looking at.
You need to get it in my phone.
Yeah, I'm bad about that. The downtown properties in particular, just to kind of, since we're having a general conversation, you know, the usage, I think the argument's been is that the usage has really not maximized the value of those properties. Not sure that even an AI appraisal or something of that nature is going to capture comparable for an uptown property on the waterfront across. So I think it's important that we consider maybe that the value that we get back is maybe not the true market value that a private investor may want to come to the table with, and we just need to be open-minded about maximizing that value for the taxpayers as we look to recoup, recoup the value. There's a real value there, and we ought not to short-sell it.
Absolutely.
And I think, just to expand on that, I don't know, as this project develops and as it's more well-known that we're moving forward on this path, we've already had some meetings with ECU and some of our partners, the city, as well as Grim Utilities about that whole First Street corridor. And I think that will create a lot more discussion about that corridor and what it can be, and maybe start some talks about what their properties may end up doing as well as a whole rather than just our property, if that makes sense.
Any more questions from Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Manager, it's up to you.
Yeah, so run quickly for your manager, report your next meeting dates. Reminder, this is your only meeting for the month of April. We meet several times in May, on the 5th and 19th. Your budget workshops will begin at 8:30, beginning at 8:30, days six through eight. Reminder, tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. in the Emergency Operations Center are our service awards. And I know that people typically announce those names if the folks like to see it. Mr. Chairman, if you feel allowed, I will run through it quickly. If you tell me for the same time you'd like me to pass, I can do that as well.
Looks like time, can we please pass it on? I'm so sorry.
Pass it on.
And we invite you all to the service awards tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. There are two remaining public information sessions for the Pitt County Megasite Project, April 8th at Welcome Middle School this week, and then April 17th will be a virtual option for those who aren't able to come out to any of the live sessions. We've already had two that went very well, one in this tech center auditorium and the other at Aiden Middle School. Reminder, the county offices are closed in observance of Good Friday on April 18th. Add to your calendars, April 24th at 9:00 a.m. is the grand opening of Bovee at Solar in Greenville and in the Green Industrial Park. And also a reminder, although it's far out, even because we only have one meeting in April on the 28th at 8:00 a.m. at Shepherdmore Memorial Library, is their annual breakfast for elected officials. So I hope you will all be able to attend that. As you heard from the resolution earlier, proclamation earlier this evening, it is National County Government Month, so keep a special eye on our social media. We did the proclamation this evening, and you'll see short-form videos on our website and on our social media pages highlighting the services that connect Pitt County government to our residents, including the EPNL, the Electronic Permitting and Licensing software that will be installed and go live next week for permitting and inspections and environmental health. You'll hear about opportunities in cultural arts and recreation, and we'll round it out with a short video on public health and some of the expanded clinic opportunities, particularly for children in our community. So super excited about highlighting and showcasing those services for National County Government Month. And then I have three special awards that I wish I had done early in the meeting and appreciate their patience. If John Demery would stand up, John is our Solid Waste Director, you all know John, and we were thrilled to hear that at a recent conference, he received this incredible award from the North Carolina Recycling, or Carolina Recycling Association, Carolinas, particularly for his incredible work in the recycling area, recognizing his work with RDS and keeping the recycling facility here in Pitt County to serve the residents in this region. This was from the Department of Environmental Quality, and this is a very prestigious and special award he receives. So wanted to recognize John, thank him for his continued service, and share that with you all. And if Angel Carmen would please stand. And she has been so patient twice now. She didn't know that a recognition would cause her to lose two full evenings, but she was with us at the North Carolina City and County Commissioners District 2 meeting, where she was presented with the Heroic Hands Award. And we are so thrilled that she joined us again here tonight. Angel is the Safety and Training Officer with Pitt Area Transit, and as part of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners District 2 program, the president of the association this year, T. Davis from Warren County, is recognizing special individuals, sort of our unsung heroes of county government. And Angel started many years ago as a driver and still helps in every aspect that she can, and now she's responsible for safety and training, and we are so thrilled to have her onboard, part of Pitt County's team, and thrilled to pieces. I know Missy could talk for hours about her. We just appreciate you standing up and being recognized at this meeting, so the whole board can see you tonight. We are so fortunate. And it's not on my agenda, but I would be remiss if I didn't ask Sheriff Dance to stand as well. And you may have heard in the news as well that she was recently recognized for her support of the United States Reserve and National Guard, and so she continues to bring great accolades to this county for the incredible work that she does in our community, and we thank her for that as well. Finally, I'd like to give you a brief update on a project that is not a county project, but one that your constituents or residents around you may ask or hear about. And this is from Optimum, you know, your local cable internet provider. This does not involve county funds or state funds, but staff from Optimum visited us in Pitt County on March 26th to advise us of an upcoming project to upgrade their cable and internet service in Pitt County. So as a reminder, Pitt County does not regulate cable franchises. This is just for information only if your constituents ask about it or if you see this happening. Optimum will be working on a project over the next year to upgrade lines that serve over 90,000 addresses in Pitt County. They're not expanding their footprint, they're only upgrading their infrastructure. Optimum intends to send notices to the affected customers of the work being done, but wanted to make this board aware that you'll see activity in the community, particularly in the Wrights Way, beginning this June and over the next year, for this project to enhance the quality of service provided to their Pitt County customers. So any concerns about this project are to be referred directly to Optimum, and I have their contact information, so if you hear anything or have any concerns, you can route them through me and I can get them directly to Optimum. But wanted you to be aware that that work was happening. And then finally, wanted to give you an update on our agricultural center lease with the General Services Administration. Some commissioners have been involved in that conversation. And as you recall, we learned some time ago, well, we knew that we currently leased the space in this building to the USDA. Their current lease expires April 30th. That lease was an extension of their lease that truly expired June 30th of last year. But because it was so difficult working with them on the renewal, we did a nine-month extension that carries them until April 30th. It has continued to be difficult to work with them, and when I shared this with you several meetings ago, you authorized me to provide notice of non-renewal of that lease to allow it to naturally expire on April 30th. At the same time, I was in communication with two different individuals in the General Services Administration, Charles Harden being my primary contact, T. Kia Smith was my initial contact. And Charles Harden advised me that although he had received our letter of non-renewal, that it really didn't make any difference to him because we were on the list of federal properties where the leases to be terminated. So he said, "Well, if you didn't send that note..." Because they said, "I want to be sure we have a smooth transition. They've been in this space, we've leased this space for some time," even though they're not actually occupying it because they were all working remotely or from home. And he said, "Well, partly because of that, it's on the lease with other properties like our federal courthouse that will either be sold or lease is terminated." And so Charles Harden and I had agreed to talk weekly to assure... And so Charles Harden and I had agreed to talk weekly to assure a smooth transition to find out where they were going. I advised him that I would assist him in finding other space in Pitt County if that's what they were looking for based on their termination, shared some ideas, and we agreed to have a weekly call going forward. That was on a Monday or on a Tuesday. He said, the other thing I need to let you know is that there are 6,000 of us employed by the General Services Administration in the Atlanta office, and I've just received an email that half of us might not have a job next week, and so I will keep that meeting on the calendar, but if you don't hear from me, that's why. Well, as it turned out, Charles Harden is no longer with the General Services Administration, and our occupants in the building have been very frustrated in trying to figure out what their next steps are in their transition out. They don't know where they're going, they don't know what they're doing, they don't have any contacts at the federal level, and their state representatives are equally frustrated. And so I've shared with them that we don't have an immediate need, that we will work with them just as graciously as we need to work with them on their transition, but we have been unable to find a contact within GSA to assist. During all of this process, I wanted to make the board aware that I've heard from several farmers in our community, particularly Charles, Lawrence Davenport, David Davenport, and several others, who expressed concern about farming services leaving this building. And they liked, they would ideally love to see Pitt County be the hub for the reorganized farm services, and then rather than vacate this space and have folks go to Goldsboro or Rocky Mount or Edgecombe County where there might be other offices, they would love to see all of that centered here in Pitt County. Now, albeit, they did acknowledge that there haven't been people in those offices other than the FSA, the Farm Service Office, which has five people in there, and they're in our building. But most folks, most of our farmers are interacting with them online or electronically, but they would, I heard loud and clear, particularly from members of the Farm Bureau and some of our farmers, that they would like to see a continued presence. That's not totally within our control because if the federal government is terminating the lease and eliminating those local offices, we can't tell the federal government that they need to keep their offices here, nor should we offer space at no cost after a lease has expired to in some way subsidize space without any contact person available to us despite our best efforts. And we've had our local farmers concerned about this and reach out to our federal delegation and talk to them to say, hey, who can I talk to to no avail? So I wanted to provide the full board an update that you may hear concerns within the community on multiple levels that I have remained and will always continue to be reasonable to work with the folks who are there some. And if you walk in that space, if you open the door, you can tell that it's been unused space, the calendar is still on 2021. And so that's what played into the federal government's determination to not renew their lease from their perspective, is that the majority of the folks in that building haven't been utilizing that space. But there are a few in that Farm Service Office who have been using it. Happy to answer any questions you might have about it. Had a couple commissioners ask me to provide an update and wanted to share at least the latest information. I am not, unfortunately, didn't come tonight with any solutions because we are still trying to find a contact within the federal government. I do have a meeting later this week with the state representative, the state office folks, David McBride, with Gina Allen from the Farm Service Administration. They wanted a face-to-face meeting to let me hear their strong concerns that they don't know where they're going, and I'm happy to listen to that, but I don't necessarily have an immediate solution. I'll take any direction from the board that you might have for me, otherwise I'll continue to try to find somebody to talk to and be as reasonable as we can. We're not, I mean, it was never Pitt County's intention to kick anybody out of their space. We recognize the value of agriculture in this community, we recognize the importance of these services to our farmers in this community, and we want to be as reasonable to satisfy our farmers, but at the same time, be responsible with our space, control only what we can. Yes. And that's all that I have for my manager's report this evening.
All right, moving on to items for consent. Motion. Have a second. All available, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Moving on. Moving on to items for decision. Sheriff Dance, if you'll join us.
Good evening, Commissioners, all Commissioners, Chairman, County Manager. Tonight's agenda concerning us will be the medical contract. There was a committee that was formed, four people from my staff, my chief, Kate Hart, Captain Poston, Captain Jacobs, and our staff attorney, along with the county manager, and I think Mike Taylor were the other two. There were four companies, I believe, that were interviewed, and they were graded on basis of first, second, third. It appeared to have been a unanimous decision that rank number one was IMS, which is Institutional Medical Services. And so that is, I guess, the recommended one on your agenda. I'm good with that, once we just hashed out a few FTE hours. But I think it would be to my satisfaction to have IMS as our new medical contract. If there are any questions that are technical, I'd like Chief Kate Hart up here to answer any of those questions since he runs the day-to-day operations of the detention center.
Motion, Nun.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a motion to select inmate medical services as recommended by the, by the sheriff and the committee and bring back the contract for the board.
I want a second.
Hold on one second.
I did have a question. Did you say that team who looked at it was unanimous?
It was unanimous by the committee. I think everyone on the committee, yeah.
I said.
You got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All the papers, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, moving on to item for decision number two, discharge of firearms ordinance second reading. Motion, Manning. I do know, sir, I do not think so. I don't think they've been doing that enough. Yes, sir. You have a motion on the floor. And second, any discussion? All the papers, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries, five, four. What is number three? Form a report to the Animal Services Board.
There are two appointments and one recommended reappointment, and the information is contained on page 126 of your agenda package. Carol Taylor and Brittany Hale are currently serving, no longer eligible to serve, so they'll need to be reappointed there. Also, the term of Michael Nels is expiring on April 7th. Good, on April 7th.
You got a motion? You have a second. All the papers, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, comments? We'll start with Mr. Nun.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment. Slide Dominoes, keep them following.
I wish everyone a happy season.
I will second that. No comment.
Dito.
All right. You got to go in closed session.
Oh, shoot.
I know. Before, I would like to say thank you for County's website. I don't know if you've looked at it, it is very nice. Good, I'm glad. Now, we need a motion going closed session, please.
And if I could read this statement, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. It has been suggested this body go to closed session under the following grounds, wonder, the staff must instruct the public body staff concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the public body in negotiating the terms for the acquisition of real property in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A52, to discuss personnel matter in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A6 and 3, finally, to prevent disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 10.
Did you add something to that? Motion, a second. All the papers, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move to closed session in just a minute.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from February 10th.
You have a motion? Got a second? All the papers, raise your right hand.
Motion. I will second.
You have a motion, a second? All the papers, raise your right hand. All right, we're going. Thank you.